All right. Good morning. The July 2, 2024, meeting of the Select Committee on the 2024 Transportation Levy will come to order. It is 9:34 a.m. I am Rob Saka, Chair of the Select Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Kettle?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Present.
Councilmember Morales?
Here.
Council President Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Rivera?
Present.
Councilmember Strauss?
Present.
Councilmember Wu?
Present.
Chair Hollingsworth?
Present.
Chair Saka?
Here.
Okay, Chair, there are nine members present.
All right. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. All right. Good morning, good morning, and hello, welcome. Everyone, colleagues, members of the public, people viewing online or on the Seattle Channel, welcome to what we are hoping is the final meeting of this Select Committee on the 2024 Transportation Levy. When this committee began its work way back in May, which seems like a long time ago now, I kicked off our very first meeting by reminding us of the incredible opportunity that is before us. An opportunity to really roll up our sleeves and build a better future for Seattle and a responsibility to deliver the everyday basics in an extraordinary way. This is now the seventh meeting of this very Select Committee over just the past two months. Two of those meetings have been public hearings exclusively focused on hearing directly from our community. Like myself, I'm sure that each and every one of you all have also spent many more weeks, days, and hours talking with people and working with analysts. Now is the time for action. We've got one chance to get this right. While we have a lot of work to do here today to take important votes on amendments, I have no doubt that this committee will send a levy package to the ballot that meets the moment and delivers on the bold basics. I will begin our meeting by proposing a revised Chair's Amendment. As you'll recall, I proposed my initial Chair's Amendment on May 31. Since then, I worked closely with each of you colleagues, our community, and other stakeholders to get feedback, drive consensus, and fine-tune the details of this proposal. Through that very intensive engagement and process, I heard loud and clear that we need a balanced proposal. We need a levy that delivers on the basics of maintenance and modernization. And we need to be mindful that this will have a real impact on people's bank accounts and livelihoods. This isn't monopoly money we're talking about here. We're asking real people to make a sacrifice in exchange for a safer, more efficient, and better maintained transportation system that benefits all of us. Through collaboration, consensus, and yes, compromise, I am proud to present a proposal today that does both. It's a proposal that we can all be proud of and unite behind. We'll hear more from central staff momentarily, but in brief, this revised Chair's Package will fund maintenance and modernization projects. It will invest in our safety, economy, and climate. And it will bring more accountability and transparency over levy spending to make sure we're truly achieving our intended goals. This levy proposal will do all of that without increasing the cost to taxpayers compared to the prior Chair's Amendment. Importantly, this proposal would also create a new, brand-new program, an innovative set of new programs to help mitigate the adverse effects of the taxes on our most vulnerable. It does all that by including funding to ensure people who qualify for tax exemptions and exceptions, like many of our seniors, people with disabilities, and disabled veterans are taking full advantage of those tax breaks and made aware of them. I thank each of you colleagues and our central staff, members of the public, for your hard work and collaboration that helped get us to this very moment. It remains to be seen, to be honest, it remains to be seen where we'll land with our final levy proposal after today's series of votes. However, I am confident, absolutely confident, that because of our very intensive engagement, rigorous debate, and strong collaboration across differences, all that has resulted in making this the final thing we do pass today a much stronger levy package to send before voters. We are at the finish line. We are at the finish line, colleagues. It's time to lean in and finish strong. Let's go. Vice Chair Hollingsworth? Sorry to put you on the spot. But do you have any additional comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have any comments. I'm looking forward to hearing the public comment from folks, and I know that you've worked really hard, so I just want to thank you for all the work that you've done. I know this was a heavy lift of a transportation levy that's going to have an impact on our city. And I appreciate you always putting me on the spot. I know that you will. So thank you so much, and looking forward to the discussion today with the rest of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Why, I do appreciate your strong collaboration and involvement and wise guidance and sage counsel, not only here at the dais, but behind the scenes as well, and working with me to craft our proposal here. In any event, thank you. Well, that said, I suppose we will now move on to the hybrid public comment period. Public comments should relate to items on today's agenda and within the purview of this committee. Clerk, how many speakers are signed up today?
Chair, currently, we have about 33 in-person speakers signed up, and there are 11 remote speakers.
All right. Each speaker will have approximately one minute. We will start with in-person speakers first. Clerk, can you please read the public comment instructions? That's disruptive behavior. We are trying to conduct important council business. If you signed up, you will have an opportunity to speak. All right. Go ahead, Clerk.
Okay. The public comment will be moderated in the following manner. Speakers will be called in the order in which they registered. Speakers will alternate between sets of 10 in-person and 10 remote speakers until the public comment period has ended. Speakers will hear a chime when 10 seconds are left of their time, and speakers' mics will be muted if they do not end their comments within the allotted time to allow us to call the next speaker. And the public comment period is now open, and we will begin with the first in-person speaker on the list. So our first in-person speaker is Heather Kurttenbach, and followed by that will be Kiara Lysikatos.
Good morning, council. For the record, my name is Heather Kurttenbach, Political Director for Ironworkers Local 86, and also the Vice President of the Seattle Building and Construction Trades Council. Here today on behalf of over 20,000 construction workers and their families across the region and the 19 affiliate unions, I'm here to express our strong support for this levy. I have a lot more on my page than one minute, so I'll keep it brief, and then I'll submit written, if that's okay. So we strongly encourage you to support this package and move it forward. The investments in this levy will improve transportation in Seattle, also creating thousands of good living wage family jobs for skilled craftspeople, friendships, and training. And they will create pathways out of poverty for women, people of color, veterans, and others who are disadvantaged in the construction careers. We appreciate your consideration of moving this package forward today. Thank you for your leadership, Chair Saka, and to so many of you who have helped get this proposal to its final form. Am I done? Sorry. Anyways, please pass it. We love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Kiara Lysikatos, and followed by that will be Rachel Smith.
Good morning, Chair Saka and Select Committee members. I am Kiara Lysikatos with the Downtown Seattle Association. As you finalize this transportation levy, we want to thank you for incorporating our key priorities to invest in a vibrant downtown, prioritize safety, make transit more reliable, and keep our streets and bridges in good condition. We urge you to preserve $15 million for downtown. Downtown Seattle is everyone's neighborhood, and these investments are critical for a neighborhood that welcomes millions of people to work and visit, as well as for the more than 100,000 people who call downtown home. Keep the levy affordable. Do not increase the total size beyond the Chair's proposal to keep it affordable for our residents and businesses. Bolster accountability. Approve the Chair's Amendment and spending restrictions, and resource the levy oversight committee to provide independent review. Set achievable goals and be ready to deliver. Approve a levy plan that can be realistically accomplished in eight years. Increase public confidence with the delivery plan so that SDOT can quickly implement these transportation projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Rachel Smith, followed by that is Jerry Poor.
Good morning. My name is Rachel Smith, and I am here today on behalf of the nearly 2,500 members at the Seattle Metropolitan Chamber of Commerce. The chamber enthusiastically participated in the development of the proposed transportation levy because a thriving equitable regional economy, which is our mission, is predicated on Seattleites being able to safely and reliably travel within the city and to surrounding areas. We thank Chair Saka and the council for your consideration of Mayor Harrow's proposal and your efforts to strengthen accountability. And we urge you not to increase the proposed levy beyond the $1.55 billion proposed in the Chair's Amendment. We believe SDOT can deliver this package, and it strikes the right balance in meeting our pressing transportation needs and keeping in mind voter concern about affordability. We also ask that you remove the directive to study transportation impact fees as a possible funding source. Last year, the business, affordable housing, and labor communities came together in opposition of that. And we believe the Funding Task Force is the appropriate place for a conversation about alternative funding. Thank you again for your work on this important levy and your time today, and let's get it done.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Jerry Poor, and followed by that will be Tia Petrovic.
Select Committee members, I'm Jerry Poor from the Port of Seattle, and my comments support funding SDOT investments in multiple modes at the $1.5 billion level. We specifically ask that you support the freight funding at $45 million as proposed in the original Chair's Amendment from June. Thank you to many of you who have supported safe and efficient movement of freight and goods. The protection of the manufacturing and industrial centers are the underpinning to livability in our city and critical to living wage jobs in our new economy. We need to ensure that the freight network has full funding and flexibility to address the overflowing needs for simple pavement repairs and fixes in the Duamesh, Soto, and Binmec. This program provides funding for underfunded minor and last-mile truck streets which are otherwise overlooked, intelligent transportation improvements. Please support the increased freight budget at $45 million. Thank you for your commitment to work together to improve safety, equity, and sustainability, and finally, invest in freight mobility to
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Tia Petrovic, and followed by that is Alex Zimmerman.
My name is Tia Petrovic. I'm a 30-year resident of Pioneer Square, and I want to thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts on the levy. My councilman, Rob Saka, has worked long and hard to bring this new levy forward. The proposed levy takes care of both our essential needs, like bridge repair, repaving streets, new sidewalks, but it also looks proactively into our future to connect neighborhoods and invest in safe, modern, and reliable, well-maintained transportation systems for everyone. Transit links people to housing and to jobs and to our beautiful city, and the levy links people to these opportunities. The levy that Councilmember Saka proposes is balanced, and it's practical. And as a Seattle property owner, I'm very proud to get behind this levy, and I encourage you to vote to support it. I also signed up remotely, so when that happens, just skip me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Alex Zimmerman, and followed by him will be Constance Slotnick-Wilson.
Thank you very much. Yeah. Yeah, my name, Alex Zimmerman. My name, Alex Zimmerman. And these 750,000 idiots and slaves deserve counsel like you. You give one minute for last meeting for almost $2 billion, yeah? Look, this slaves very quiet, typical for Seattle. 750,000 idiots never once stand up and talk, "Come on, give us a little bit more time. Give us one minute more for speaking." No, you're not care about this. These 750,000 idiots deserve you because you doing exactly same like a Nazi Gestapo fascist bandita. You are this, but game will finish right now, yeah? America start big grid again. Stand up, America. Stop this Nazi pig.
All right. Our next in-person speaker is Constance Slotnick-Wilson, and followed by that is Janice Stam.
I'm Constance Slotnick-Wilson, current president of the Ballard Landmark Resident Council. It is my understanding that $20 million will be taken from the fund for the upkeep of the arterial streets that will benefit all Seattleites and will be used to finish the bike trail down Leary Avenue, which will ultimately endanger our residents on Leary. Over 160 elderly and handicapped people live in our building and must cross the area of the proposed bicycle path to get into cars and other vehicles. We do not oppose the Burke-Gilman Trail, but we do oppose having the trail go past our front door. It is dangerous. Please vote no on the amendment.
Thank you.
All right. Our next in-person speaker is Janice Stam, and followed by that will be Deborah Curtis.
Good morning. My name is Janice Stam. I'm nearly 82 years old, and I live at Ballard Landmark. The proposal to put the bike trail down Leary Avenue is dangerous to us. When I go out to walk, I can barely see. I'm nearly blind. To have the bike trail this close to the sidewalk is a danger to all of us. Most of us have some impairments of some kind that keeps us from walking steadily and safely. A bike trail represents a threat to that. So SDOT has worked with us to try to come up with a concession, the cutout. We thank them for that, but it won't work. Please vote no on the amendment.
Thank you.
Our next in-person speaker is Deborah Curtis, and followed by that is Riley Atkinson.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Curtis. I am also 87 years old and currently live at Ballard Landmark. And I come before you today to assert that the missing link of the Burke-Gilman Trail not be relocated down Leary Avenue in front of our building, as it represents a significant safety hazard for both myself and my neighbors. To optimize strength and fitness every day, I walk from the building and throughout the neighborhood, frequently crossing Leary Avenue. As well, I take the 40 bus to and from Benner Royal Hall and elsewhere in downtown Seattle. Healthy businesses, loyal patrons, and a safe environment contribute greatly to the vibrant community that Ballard has become. Let's ensure it continues to be that for us all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our last in-person speaker before alternating to remote is Riley Atkinson.
My name is Riley Atkinson. I'm 87 years old and live in Ballard Landmark Senior Community at 5433 Leary Avenue. I'm here because of very serious safety issues. As you know, the city plans to build a bicycle path along Leary Avenue on our side of the street. The mixture of seniors and bicycles would be a disaster waiting to happen. Entering and exiting our front door would require our seniors to cross the path. Many of our residents have problems seeing, hearing, not to mention mobility issues. Walkers and wheelchairs do not move quickly. So our seniors would be at serious risk of collisions with bikes. Further, the access of people to and from emergency and service vehicles and fringe and family vehicles would quite likely be compromised. We are not against a fix for the missing, but we urge you to vote against the amendment for the levy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we are alternating to remote speakers. Our first remote speaker is Kate Rubin, and followed by Kate will be Megan Cruz. Just a reminder to remote speakers, once you hear you've been unmuted, you will have to press star six.
My name is Maxine Schiffman. I moved into Ballard with my husband in January of this year. He's 89, and I'm 88. I'm here to protest the building of the bike trail portion of the Burke-Gilman Trail of the Missing Link Project. I'm opposed primarily because of the safety hazard to myself and all of my fellow residents. I have a hearing problem, which would make it difficult for me to hear bikes coming, and because I trip and fall a great deal, I always look at the ground when I walk. Therefore, I'm not aware of bicycles coming. I have the experience of being struck by a bicycle as I was crossing the street in Washington, DC in the 1980s, and I still have the star as a reminder of that terrible experience. Therefore, we have a vulnerable population, one that the city should value, and any design that does not take this into consideration is flawed and should not be used for Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, back to remote speakers. Kate Rubin, are you still there? Okay.
Good morning. My name is Kate Rubin. I'm the co-executive director of E Seattle and a renter in District 2, where we bear the brunt of Seattle's traffic best. I am calling today to urge you to support Councilmember Morales's amendment increasing the transportation levy to $1.7 billion. Seattleites are willing to invest in a safer, more accessible, and sustainable transportation system. Our neighbors are dying from preventable collisions, and transportation emissions are our largest greenhouse gas contributor. It's unacceptable that disabled people, children, and elders face disproportionate risks on our streets. We can't afford to pit essential programs against each other. We shouldn't have to choose between new sidewalks and repairing existing ones, or between safe rugs for kids and equity-based neighborhood projects. We need more sidewalks and improved transportation options to make our beautiful city accessible to the people who live, work, and visit here. Please support a $1.7 billion levy that invests in our future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next remote speaker is Megan Cruz, and followed by Megan will be Sonatina Sanchez.
Good morning. I'm Megan Cruz in District 7, speaking in favor of the latest levy amendment that supports freight safety and growth. I encourage you all to pass Chair Saka's $45 million freight budget. This is to fund critical road repairs and to plan for new transportation infrastructure, like off-street truck loading. Freight and delivery trucks are growing faster than all the other modes of transportation in Seattle. Studies here show that when these vehicles can move safely and easily through our streets, it makes our roads safer for all users, and it reduces congestion and pollution. This levy increase will go directly to helping do this. In addition, on Resolution 32137, I support Councilmember Kettle's amendment for special oversight of public safety across all transportation modes, especially those of our first responders. Thank you all for your work on these issues and your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay, our next remote speaker is Sonatina Sanchez, and followed by Sonatina will be Tiffany McCoy.
Hello, my name is Sonatina Sanchez, and I am calling in support of Councilmember Morales's amendment to raise the levy to $1.7 billion. A poll conducted by Change Research found that 79% of voters would approve this level of funding, and that 2/3 of those would go even higher, preferring $1.9 billion levy when told it would build more sidewalks and safety projects. We can't hit vital priorities against each other. We need to both build new sidewalks in the areas of Seattle without current access to the last mile to connect to our transit system. And we need to also repair sidewalks all over the city that are currently a danger to our neighbors. We also shouldn't be able to have to choose between public open space so our neighbors can gather, or protected bike lanes so we can get between our neighborhoods and visit our friends and family all over the city. We need all of these things, and polling shows that voters will pass a levy that funds
All right. Our next remote speaker is Tiffany McCoy, and followed by Tiffany will be Ethan Robinson.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Tiffany McCoy. I'm the Policy and Advocacy Director at How's Our Neighbors. I'm also a District 1 resident, living in the Arbor Heights neighborhood, and I am a homeowner. I'm calling to support Councilmember Morales's amendment 2 to increase the transportation levy. I am personally happy to spend more in property taxes to fund these critical, non-car transportation projects identified in this amendment. And I agree, we do only have one chance to get this transportation levy right. For right now, pedestrians, cyclists, Seattleites are being killed on our streets weekly due to cars and unsafe roads. This transportation levy needs to invest in the safety and the prevention of these vehicular deaths. Going back to basics would mean ensuring the safety of Seattleites who will get around our city outside of their car. The climate crisis is here. Going back to basics would also look like building up our green infrastructure for walking, rolling, and biking. Please pass Councilmember Morales's amendment.
Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is Ethan Robinson, and followed by Ethan will be Marissa Parshotam.
Good morning. My name is Ethan Robinson, and I am the Advocacy Organizer at How to Tap for Humanity, Seattle, King, and Kitahak Counties. I'm here to express our strong opposition to the proposed amendment that would open the door to and likely result in a transportation impact fee on new development. Whether in this amendment or another, a transportation impact fee risks exacerbating our housing crisis. When this was considered last year, our friends at Sightline highlighted the negative impact similar fees had in Portland. These fees reduced housing production, increased the burden on affordable housing types, and disproportionately affected renters and new home buyers, those least able to afford it. It is one thing to implement a fee on more expensive housing to pay for affordable housing, like programs like MHA. But implementing fees on housing to fund transportation projects only stifles housing production at a time when we desperately need more housing. Additionally, the process is concerning. The mandatory housing affordability program underwent extensive hearings and over a year of public debate. We urge you to reconsider this amendment. Thank you for your leadership and service.
Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is Marissa Parshotam, and followed by Marissa is BJ Last.
Hi, my name is Marissa Parshotam. I'm a volunteer with Lake City Collective in District 5, a resident of District 4, and a member of SDOT's Transportation Equity Work Group. I'm here to voice my support for the $41 million Neighborhood Initiative Safety Partnership Program and the levy proposal by Mayor Harrow. As stated in previous city council meetings and letters supported by the TEW, we are disappointed in some members' lack of commitment to the race and social justice initiative through cuts to this program that builds equitable investments centering low-income BIPOC immigrant refugee, disabled, and aging communities. The TEW urges you to support the original proposal by the mayor and Councilmember Morales's amendment 6 to reinstate the $41 million investment. Again, we'd like to thank her and Councilmember Hollingsworth for meeting with TEW members to cultivate partnerships and build equitable transportation outcomes for BIPOC and underserved communities.
Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is BJ Last, and followed by BJ will be Lake City Collective.
Morning. My name is BJ Last. I'm Ballard homeowner. I'm calling in support of Councilmember Morales's amendment to increase the transportation levies to $1.7 billion and really increase actual spending on pedestrian and bike infrastructure to actually try to make our transit network more safe. I really don't support the current levy because it's really car-centric and reinforces which areas of the city have pedestrian and bike, so have safe pedestrian bike infrastructure, and which areas of the city doesn't. It really reinforces which areas of the city It really reinforces which areas of the city traffic deaths are always concentrated in. So the new levy, the current proposed levy, some examples, like it cuts new sidewalk funding to fund sidewalk repairs. So I guess I should give up on Eversean sidewalks north of 85th, or anywhere else in the city that doesn't have them, but hey, at least the sidewalks outside of Amazon will always get repaired promptly. Guessing like, what, 48 hours on that one? Also cuts that equity-focused neighborhood safety program, which is again, another great way to help make sure that transportation deaths remain deeply concentrated in District Two.
Thank you.
Our next remote speaker is Lake City Collective, and followed by Lake City Collective will be Kathy Richiotto.
Good morning, members of the committee. We are
Lake City Collective!
And we are here taking time from our summer camp to speak before you. We've recently discovered that our community-led, a little group, a Healthy Streets project was removed from the list of initial streets and public spaces projects. And so last week, we had people from across the US and Canada who came to visit our project is that unique. But with me, I have members from kids to seniors that would like to share why this is important.
I'm Peggy Hernandez. The little group, Stay Healthy Streets, was an idea from the community, by the community, for the community. The programs and activities have been implemented by neighbors who have been unseen and unheard forever. We need that the project, that the neighbors wish for this plaza to be completed. This is a climate, race, and social justice project, and has to be
Okay, our last signed-up remote speaker is Katie Richiotto.
Hello, Chair Sokas and councilmembers. I'm Katie Richiotto from the LIT-I5 North Stakeholder Group. I want to thank you all for your work on this important transportation levy, and express our group's support for the chair's revised levy package. I also want to specifically express thanks and support to Councilmember Strauss for his amendment to study funding for highway lifts in North Seattle. Studying the feasibility of transformational projects such as this is a first and important step to help reconnect communities divided by highways. It will also help us prepare to realize community benefits like housing, open space, bike and pedestrian pathways, and more from any future work Washita must do to upgrade I-5 through Seattle. Projects such as highway lifts will benefit tens of thousands of people in our city, and I ask you to preserve funding for lift studies in the final levy package. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to in-person speakers. Our first in-person speaker is Stephen Guild, followed by Stephen will be Maxine Schiffman.
First one is the lady that went last on the list.
Can you hear me now?
Sir.
My name is Stephen Guild. I live at Ballard Landmark Senior Community, and I've been there for seven years. I'm co-chair of the Resident Safety Task Course. I've been deeply involved with the Missing Link Project. I'm 83 years old. I'm kind of the youngster here, and I choose to live at, chose to live at Ballard Landmark because it's a place that's safe and secure, as a home. And I know others are here for the same reason I planned, that others are here for the same reason. I plan to live there for the remainder of my life, hopefully safe and secure. Present plan, Missing Link plan, is not safe or secure, and it certainly is not, pay attention to the health and dangers that arise. I'm not a protester. I've tried to work cooperatively with the city to find
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Maxine Schiffman, and followed by Maxine will be Eugene Wasserman.
I believe I already spoke, so, thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Eugene Wasserman, and followed by Eugene will be Susan Kirchner.
Hi, I'm Eugene Wasserman from the North Seattle Industrial Association. First, we want to thank the chair and everybody for putting additional money into freight mobility. We're very happy about that and our recognition by the council. But one thing that's missing from the package is the Bird Gilman Trail extension, or the Missing Link, as you've heard. The route that we, that the city's looking at as planned is the safest route through Ballard if you want to have the Missing Link completed. The other, we have fought the other proposals, which were being unsafe, and we truly believe they are. We feel that the city could work with the group that's here today, and it's only one group, it's not like the whole street, and find a way to do this. She cannot, if the city cannot find a way to do this, then you might as well rip out the bicycle stuff from your plan, because this will occur wherever you have bicycle paths going in front of multifamily buildings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next in-person speaker is Susan Kirchner, followed by Susan will be Howard Greenwich, and followed by Howard will be Kathy Dunn.
Hi, my name is Susan Kirchner, and I'm also a resident of the Ballard Landmark. I moved there six months ago after my husband died to be less, to be less isolated and part of a community. So I've seen the mobility problems with people and emergency vehicles also. You know, I greatly support bicycle commute. My nephew works for the city and commutes by bicycle every day, and I love him. I also love living in Ballard, and I myself have a problem with vision and depth perception, so it's hard for me to be aware of my surroundings while I'm stepping off a curb or into a vehicle. So I greatly support public transportation, but I think that this piece of the bicycle trail should be reconsidered. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Okay, one moment. So, okay, so our next in-person speaker is Howard Greenwich, followed by Howard will be Kathy Dunn, and followed by Kathy will be Tyler Vasquez. My co-clerk has let me know that to move things along faster, it would be great if you could line up at the microphones if you are next. So again, Howard, and then followed by Howard will be Kathy Dunn and Tyler Vasquez.
Good morning, Chair Sokas. Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Howard Greenwich, I'm the Research Director for PG Sound Sage. I'm here to urge you to support Councilmember Morales's amendment two, which would increase the levy by 150 million and include $5 million for community-led planning around new light rail stations in the CID and Graham Street. When the Move Seattle levy was on the ballot, put on the ballot in 2015, Seattle was still emerging from the Great Recession, and city leaders were worried that working-class voters in southeast Seattle would vote no on that property tax. Sage and BIPOC-led community groups in the Rainier Valley advocated to include $10 million in seed funding for a new Graham Street station from the proposed levy as a tangible benefit to the community. Council included it, and the levy won. But the $10 million in levy funds were never spent on Graham Street. We are asking you to include $5 million for community-led planning around the CID stations and the Graham Street station to make good on that promise. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Kathy Dunn, followed by Kathy will be Tyler Vasquez, and followed by Tyler is Erin Musser. If you are able, please line up at the microphones if you know you are next. So Kathy.
I'm Kathy Dunn with a K, not a C, and I strongly support Tammy Morales's amendment to increase that transportation levy for public safety because that's our number-one priority, and there are so many vulnerable people walking, biking, in wheelchairs in the city. I used my bike, I'm 80, I'm 73 years old. I used my bike to get here, and today I'll be riding on Fifth Avenue with speeding traffic in the lane on my bike. On Font Laroy Way, where we're going to pave in the transportation levy, let's put a bike lane on there, because I can't bike, I'm biking in speeding traffic. I'm 73 years old, I'm getting more and more scared, and I just think that people will vote for this levy. This is our chance to get a good, solid levy that's actually going to hold us through eight years, and there's so much that needs to be done, so many missing links. Every day, almost every week, I bike on Font Laroy Way.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Tyler Vasquez, followed by Tyler will be Erin Musser, and followed by Erin will be Cecilia Black.
Good morning, Select Transportation Committee. My name is Tyler Vasquez, and I'm the Seattle Advocate for Cascade Bicycle Club. We are happy to see that Chair Sokas' package mostly retains the mayor's proposal. As a result, this investment will fill gaps in our bike network, maintain bicycle lanes, and invest in South Seattle. Additionally, we are supportive of amendments that add additional funding to the bike program. These amendments are CM Strauss's Leary Way Project and CM Morales's amendment. This levy proposal provides fundamental essentials for people biking and traveling throughout Seattle. Thank you for listening to our public, our public comment. Also, thank you for all the work that you've done, listening to many constituents throughout Seattle. We look forward to seeing the final voted proposal, and we look forward to the voters voting on this in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Erin Musser, and followed by Erin will be Cecilia Black, and followed by Cecilia will be Judy Smith.
Good morning. My name is Erin Musser, represent the Disability and Mobility Initiative, and I want to thank all of you for being here through this short little time of working with this. I appreciate all the time. Councilmember Sokas, I appreciate you coming and speaking to us. I highly, highly hope that we can have Tammy Morales's initiative, her amendment, I mean. That would be so great. I, you may have seen me on the front page of the Seattle Times talking about how an inch on a wheelchair, if there's a bump, represents a foot on the, on a street for a person who's walking or driving. Imagine me going over an inch on the sidewalk. Imagine you going by, on the freeway, you go over a foot long, a foot-high bump. That would not be good. Your coffee would go everywhere, and you would still say, "When is the city going to fix these streets?"
It's our chance! Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Cecilia Black, and followed by Cecilia will be Judy Smith.
My name is Cecilia Black, and I am a community organizer at Disability Rights Washington. Between 2016 and 2020, people with disabilities were involved in 4% of total vehicle accidents, and yet accounted for 53% of people killed. When 60% of our streets are inaccessible because of broken or missing sidewalks, we have to put our bodies in the line of traffic to leave our houses. Every member on this council has flagged, has flagged or proposed additional funding for projects that will make our transportation safer and more accessible, but this funding will have little impact if it comes from cuts to equally vital programs. I urge you to support Councilmember Morales's amendment and fund these projects by increasing the levy. While roads need to be maintained, their neglect is nowhere comparable to that of sidewalks. I am incredibly disappointed to see sidewalk repair and sidewalk compliance FTE levy the durable infrastructure funding. Lastly, we have a housing affordability crisis, not because we need to fund a better transportation system, but because of our land use decisions and housing policy, and I am
Okay, our last in-person speaker for this section is Judy Smith.
Good morning. My name is Judy Smith. My 74-year-old husband and I recently bought e-bikes, and they have flattened the hills around our home in the Eastlake neighborhood. Riding our bikes is often faster than driving and parking, and it's always a lot more fun. As an aside, we're looking forward to the protected bike lanes on Eastlake Avenue. They can't be built fast enough, and neither can other protected bike infrastructure. I have found that there are many missing links where bike lanes suddenly come to an end, but the Ballard link is one of the worst for so many people, and I'm glad it will finally be addressed with this levy. Let's follow the example of other great cities around the world that prioritize walking, biking, and transit. More people now bike in Paris than drive, and that has happened just in the last few years through the Parisian mayor's aggressive bike infrastructure plan. Let's pass the full levy and make walking and biking easier for our health and the health of the planet.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, we've had some people sign up remotely, so I'm going to switch to that, if that's all right?
All right.
So I'm seeing some names, and they're not present, but just in case. Diana Valdez. Diana, I'm not seeing Diana online. Alexis Osorio, I'm not seeing Alexis. Oh, okay, I see Diana. So Diana, okay, I see you online.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Diana Valdez. I'm a summer camp organizer in the Lake City Collective, and I would like to bring our kids to the community and have the budget back to, to bring a water, a water feature, a water feature for the benefit for the kids. Thank you.
My name is Diana, and I'm 16 years old. Our apartments are very hot, and our moms are not able to take, are not able to take us to other places to refresh. We want our idea of the plaza to have resources and become a reality.
Hi, my name is Ainsley Garcia Hernandez. I'm seven years old. With the plaza, I now can play and have met other children like me. I like being outside.
Hi, my name is Alexis Osorio. I am 18 years old. I am a member of Lake City Collective. At the Healthy Street Plaza, we as a community are building so I can play and hang out with my friends because I, before I couldn't.
Hi, my name is Hector, and I'm 17 years old, and I've been a member for Lake City for a very long time. And our community deserves a plaza, the open community is packed together, and for kids to enjoy their childhoods. Thank you.
Chair, it looks like we had multiple people sign up using the same phone number. Is it okay if we proceed as if they're all registered individually?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And then we'll pivot back
Sure.
The cycle to the in-person.
Okay. Okay, you are unmuted again. If there's any other people who want to talk, we have Maria de la Santos.
Hi.
Hello, soy María. Soy señor. Y lo que desearía que completaran el programa sería una fuente para poder rescatarnos, porque dado la falta de fuente, ya se han muerto personas adultas como yo. Okay?
Hi, I'm Maria. I am 71 years old, and I would like a, a, a water feature, because two years ago, there was a senior like me who died because of the heat. So that's what I want. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Aiken. I'm 11 years old. I have friends in other neighborhoods, a spray park near their houses. I would also like a water feature near a community's apartment building. Thank you.
Okay, I think everybody who has signed up spoke. I heard everyone's names, so we're going to go to our next remote speaker, who is Alberto Alvarez.
Hi, good morning, council. The average commute time is at least 30 minutes on a good day. Often with gridlock traffic, this can be 45 minutes to an hour. Though it is good to provide better roads for car traffic, it's just Though it is good to provide better roads for car traffic, it's just as important to give people who walk, bike, or roll the right circumstances to get around the city. Sidewalks are in severe disrepair, or worse, nonexistent. Bike paths are not well separated from cars. If your plan is to get people down into the downtown core, they need better options. Driving is not always the best option. It's in fact far more costly. You have to give people who use these services like sidewalk and bike paths a lot better options. Please support the Morales amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, that was all of our remote speakers currently, so we'll be switching back to in-person. So same as last time, our first in-person speaker is Brittany Brost, followed by Brittany will be Parker Dawson, and followed by Parker is Lyletha Williams. If you know you are next, please try and line up by the mics if you can. Thank you. So Brittany Brost is our first in-person speaker for this set.
My name is Brittany Brost. I'd like to take a moment to say that you should support the amendment to increase the levy. It's the only way to prioritize people walking, rolling, biking, and transit. Otherwise, you're pitting everything against cars. As someone who cannot drive and will never be able to drive, it's the only way to get around this city is by either walking, biking, or taking transit. Unfortunately, this city is not super accessible in that aspect. If I go south of I-90, I run into problems because there's not a lot of transit at times, and the sidewalks are sometimes nonexistent. If I go north, well, sidewalks aren't there, and the transit isn't the greatest. Unfortunately, this city is very car-heavy, and that's been a factor since the 1950s. Unfortunately, that wasn't your fault, but you have the chance to correct that. Councilmember Morales's amendment helps do that. Go big and hit Vision Zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Parker Dawson, followed by Parker will be Lyletha Williams, and followed by Lyletha will be Eric Blumhagen.
Good morning, Parker Dawson with Mass Builders, speaking in opposition to Amendment Seven, as well as a small portion of Amendments One and Two. In November, your constituents will be voting on a billion and a half dollar levy, with the expectation that their hard-earned dollars are going to build real things and not study yet more ways to tax them later. Bearing within it a task force to study "supplemental" funding sources is a betrayal against the purpose of this levy and to all the voters who you're asking to approve this measure. Whether $1 or $5 million, the request to study alternative funding sources like impact fees is tone deaf to our decade-long housing and affordability crisis, and is an inappropriate allocation of dollars that really should be used to build these sidewalks, the bridges, the roadways that we desperately need today and that this levy was designed to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Lyletha Williams, followed by Lyletha is Eric Blumhagen, and followed by Eric Blumhagen is Matthew S.
Hey, my name is Lyletha Williams, and I'm from WSOS, but I'm also here as a senior. That sounds funny, a young senior. We're here to support the amendment by Councilmember Morales. It makes it possible for everybody to get where they got to go. It includes everybody, the young people, the old people. It puts the money back in the equity-focused programs, and it doesn't pit us against each other. It helps everybody get where they have to go. And before now, I wouldn't have thought that that was important, but since I'm Aiken and slow, I really appreciate the effort that she made to support my population, because we're not often really thought about, even though I'm a young one in here. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Eric Blumhagen, followed by Eric is Matthew S., and followed by Matthew S. is Tyler Blackwell.
Hello, I'm Eric Blumhagen. Please vote no on Amendment Three. I'm a bike commuter, and I very much want the missing link to be completed, but Leary is the wrong place. Safety first, you've heard from seniors. But Leary is also more dangerous for bicycles than the Schuylkill route. It crosses more active driveways and side streets. Community input: The Schuylkill route was preferred by an overwhelming majority of trail users. Fiscal responsibility: The request for the missing link is $20 million, four times the cost of the Schuylkill route, and that's likely to grow because of undergrounding utilities. The main argument for the Leary route is the desire to do something. However, we shouldn't choose a lousy plan because the better plan is held hostage by a few businesses and their lawyers. Leary is the wrong place for a bike trail. It's wrong for seniors, wrong for cyclists. I ask you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, members of the audience, please refrain from clapping and cheering and all that stuff after a public comment. Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Matthew S., followed by Matthew is Tyler Blackwell, and followed by Tyler Blackwell is Marshall Bender.
Well, good morning, President Nelson, Chair Saka, Vice Chair Hollingsworth, and members of the Select Committee. My name is Matthew Sutherland, and I am the Advocacy Director at Transportation Choices Coalition. We are a nonprofit that supports safe, equitable, and sustainable transportation for all Washingtonians. I want to speak to you today about equity. The transportation levy is a once-in-a-decade opportunity to make Seattle a more equitable city. But to succeed, we must fund programs like the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program. This program ensures that everyone can participate in a process to improve their own neighborhoods. Based on recommendations from the Transportation Equity Work Group, it would allow SDOT to work especially with marginalized and vulnerable communities to meet their needs. It has generated excitement from a broad coalition of stakeholders and would motivate voters across the city. Cuts to this program would hold back our city's equity progress. We ask the council to support amendments that would restore full funding to this critical program. Thank you for your time. We look forward to continuing to work with you on a strong equity focus proposal to bring to voters, and look forward to seeing you out on the trail advocating for this levy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Tyler Blackwell, followed by Tyler is Marshall Bender, and followed by Marshall is Nick Sotelli. Again, if you know you are next, please try and line up if you can.
Good morning, Select Committee. My name is Tyler Blackwell, and I am the transportation planner for the Soto Business Improvement Area. We represent about 1,200 businesses south of downtown in the industrial district, and we advocate for safety and connectivity for all modes. Freight is one mode that has been underfunded and understaffed despite being essential for all of us here today. A new freight program with proper funding would allow for the development of industrial-grade Vision Zero design strategies, the maintenance of last-mile connections serving critical infrastructure, and the ability to leverage funds for additional freight projects. Thank you for your time and consideration on this matter and for the levy as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Marshall Bender, followed by Marshall is Nick Sotelli, and followed by Nick Sotelli is Rita Holsman.
Okay, hello, councilmembers. My name is Marshall Bender. I'm a resident of District Five, living near Northgate Station, and I'm here to advocate for a yes vote on Councilmember Morales's Amendment Number Two. We need more funding for transit. Where I live, there aren't even sidewalks, so I'm very lucky to be an able-bodied person. But if I were in a wheelchair or had mobility issues, I could not get around where I live. So we need to build more sidewalks. Also, we need to save the 20 bus. Where I just moved, the 20 bus is a great neighborhood connector, and if we were to delete this from service, students, disabled people, older residents, children, everybody would be left out of taking the bus. So we need more money. We need to invest in bike infrastructure, because people die on our streets every single day. They die over there, they die in my neighborhood, they die in South Seattle, and nothing gets done about it. I don't own a car. I'm a member of the Transit Riders Union, and I do that as a political choice, but mainly, we just need to do this so people can stop dying on our streets. It's a tragedy, and it should not happen. I lived in Europe just for the past nine months in Vienna. People don't die on the streets there, but they do here. We can change that right now. Vote yes on her amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Nick Sotelli, and followed by Nick is Rita Holsman, and followed by Rita is Charlotte Stark.
Hi, my name is Nick. I'm a District Three voter, and I don't drive. We need a larger and more ambitious levy, so please vote yes on Councilmember Morales's amendment to increase the size of it. Polling consistently shows that Seattleites want more sidewalks, more bike lanes, and more bus lanes. This is a way to connect our communities together, allow people to get to different districts. I don't even shop in District Two at all, because if I bike there, I'll die. I don't go to District Five, because if I walk there, there are no sidewalks, and I'll die. Same thing for transit lanes. There's no buses that are fast connecting our neighborhoods together, and this means that it's bad for small businesses, bad for the economy, and bad for safety. You've heard from so many people here now that there are people dying on our streets because they don't feel safe going around. There are hundreds of thousands of more people that don't go anywhere because it's not safe, and they know it's not safe to do that. That means that they're not shopping in our communities, they're not staying in Seattle, and they're not doing things to make our communities more vibrant. Please support Councilmember Morales's amendment to increase the size of the levy. Don't pit these modes against each other. We need more sidewalks. We need more bus lanes. We need more bike lanes. We need to fulfill our commitment for Vision Zero, which is increasingly looking like we're not going to make that goal at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Rita Holsman, followed by Rita is Charlotte Stark, and then followed by Charlotte is Morgan Putnan.
Good morning. Thank you for all the excellent work you have put into the amendments you will be reviewing today. My name is Rita Holsman. As you may recall, I am the widow of Steve Holsman, who died last December as the result of a collision between a motorist and Steve who was biking in our West Seattle neighborhood. Given the circumstances of my husband's death and the alarming number of other recent deaths, traffic deaths, and serious injuries on Seattle streets, it would be hard to overstate how important it is to me that we as a city prioritize traffic safety, no matter whether you are traveling by private car, commercial vehicle, public transportation, in a wheelchair, or on foot. Therefore, I am pleased to see the emphasis that has been placed on safety improvements for all modes of transportation. For Seattle to continue to thrive economically, we must also be able to thrive socially and be safe physically. The amendments under consideration today offer some excellent opportunities for balancing those needs in forward-thinking ways. Please vote thoughtfully and compassionately on them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Charlotte Stark, followed by Charlotte is Morgan Putnan, and followed by Morgan is Carlo Alcantara.
Good morning to you. I am president of Alki Community Council, a resident, obviously, of District One, and resident of Alki for the last four and a half years. I'm speaking on behalf to support Councilman Saka's levy for four reasons. Primarily, Alki is in crisis. We have a public safety crisis on our streets associated with the dangers of street racing that can be mitigated with traffic calming and other traffic measures such as traffic cameras. We're looking forward to working with Councilman Saka further and with the entire city council to address these issues, because we've lost too many young people to the violence and the street racing, as well as a profound amount of hit-and-runs. In addition, we have the Seattle Bridge, the funding for bridges, which we fully support, repairing, which was repaving roads, which was a number-one priority, and also fully support oversight and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next in-person speaker is Morgan Putnan, followed by Morgan is Carlo Alcantara, and followed by Carlo, oh, sorry, Carlo, is Steve Rupstello.
The current levy is too car-centric. It's also expensive. To do more, we have to spend less and be more creative. $126 million for sidewalks is $250,000 per block, which is interestingly less than what we spent historically, so that's probably not even right. But $250,000 per block is a lot. Why don't we just take some on the street? Let's just give it to pedestrians and cyclists. We can do that for far less with traffic calming devices, with devices. That sounds a bit crazy, but consider the benefits. You're going to improve cyclists' and pedestrians' safety. You're going to reduce water runoff. By the way, there's a $600 million wastewater project in Ballard, a single project. Wastewater is a big deal when you pave a city within an inch of its life. Most critically, it reduces the amount of additional infrastructure that we have to pay for. So I realize it's the 11th hour, and you're going to take a vote. Please ensure this levy allows flexibility for our investments, being creative, and please ensure response to citizens who have real estate.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Carlo Alcantara, followed by Carlo is Steve Rupstello, and followed by Steve is Clara Cantor.
Logan, everybody. I think I've met with almost everyone here on the council so far, but again, my name's Carlo. I'm D5 resident. I volunteer my time, my free time, with Aurora Reimagine Coalition. I'm here to urge you to support Councilmember Morales's $1.7 million amendment to the levy. If you didn't know, last night, another woman was killed on Aurora Avenue North at 10:00 PM riding her motorcycle when she was struck by an SUV. She was heading south through the Wallingford-Fremont section. This is just another death that could have been prevented by better street reconfiguration, and something this levy can help to do and help us accomplish. To reflect on your remarks this morning, Chair Saka, I wanted to ask that you also please consider not just the monetary sacrifice that we ask our residents to make, but the continual sacrifice that we can avoid on our streets that people are already making on their way to work, to school, and to and from their homes. So please support this amendment to increase the levy to $1.7 million. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Steve Rupstello, followed by Steve is Clara Cantor, and followed by Clara is Kat Munson.
I hear a lot about safety, and Aurora Avenue has been a concern of mine. Your reduction of four-lane roads to two-lane roads has not given the safety you've all talked about. Matter of fact, we're having more people actually getting hurt, because we have fewer people on the road and more congestion because of the fact that we've reduced capacity. Now, on Aurora, you probably are not aware, well, you may be aware of the, there's a few overpasses for safety, which are generally not maintained very well, but I bet most of you don't know, there is an underpass, excuse me, there was an underpass for pedestrians. City closed it many years ago. Safety is, seems like a beacon you use just before you do the switch. Right now, you should be looking at how much of this proposal really goes to safety, and I'm...
Thank you.
Okay, our next in-person speaker is Clara Cantor, and followed by Clara is Kat Munson, and so far, that is, I think, our last in-person speaker.
Hi, my name is Clara Cantor. I'm a community organizer for Seattle Neighborhood Greenways. You have heard from dozens of different speakers tonight. You've heard, you've had 1,600 emails asking you to prioritize a larger levy of at least $1.7 billion and asking you to support Councilmember Morales's amendment. All of these people have been prioritizing Vision Zero, asking for bike lanes, neighborhood projects, freight projects. We absolutely cannot pit these needs against each other when we have the ability and the means to fund all of them and actually have a transportation system that works for all of us, including the 40% of Seattle that doesn't drive. Polling shows that 79% of Seattle voters will support the size of that levy. In fact, the city's own polling shows that the only salient argument that actually decreases support amongst voters is that it doesn't go far enough. This amendment will dramatically help the levy gain more support this fall, especially from strong supporters who are essential to winning the levy campaign. The increase will cost average homeowners...
Thank you.
Okay, our final in-person speaker is Kat Munson.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Kat Munson. I'm the Policy and Campaigns Associate at Real Change Homeless Empowerment Project. I'm also a resident of District Four, where I've been a homeowner for over 20 years. I strongly urge you to pass Councilmember Morales's proposed amendment increasing the levy to $1.7 billion. It would truly be a privilege as a homeowner to pay an incrementally small amount to see all crucial investments in sidewalks and safety implemented, and not have to see choices made between those that improve the quality of life and even preserve life for those who take public transit, walk, bike, and roll. As a representative of our Real Change street paper vendors, whose relationship with police is tenuous at best, I'd also like to specifically address public safety on transit. Armed officers do not belong on public transit. Full stop. Transit safety should be centered in a comprehensive approach that includes pedestrian lighting, clean buses and trains, social services, and other non-enforcement personnel. Please vote yes on Councilmember Morales's amendment to move funding to armed officers to Vision Zero projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chair, I believe that was all of our signed-up speakers.
All right. Well, thank you, members of the public, for sharing your feedback here with us, many of which for multiple times. with us, many of which for multiple times throughout the course of this past two, two and a half months. We will now move on to our first item of business. Will the clerk please read the short title of Item 1 into the record?
Agenda Item 1, Council Bill 120788, Council Bill, An Ordinance-Related Transportation Provided for the Submission to the Qualified Electors of the City at an Election to Be Held on November 5, 2024, A Proposition Authorizing the City to Levy Regular Property Taxes for Briefing Discussion and Possible Vote.
All right. Thank you. And it looks like Calvin Chow, our Central Staff Policy Expert, has joined us at the table. Calvin will provide us with the high-level overview of amendments 1 through 8. After his presentation, I will move the bill, the main bill, that was transmitted, and then the revised Chair's Package. And then each sponsor will have their, will move their respective amendments. And after receiving a second, Calvin will provide a more detailed overview of each individual amendment before voting on each individual amendment. So little, little more complex, a lot more complex, to be honest, than, than, you know, the items that have come before us, many if not all the items that have come before us so far this year. So what's going to happen is, after, well, we're going to pass the baton, pass the mic over to Cal in a moment, but what's going to happen, colleagues, is we're going to move to consider the original transmitted levy legislation. At that point, but we're not going to vote on it. At that point, we're going to move to consider the, quote-unquote, revised Chair's Package. That is Revised Chair's Package Amendment Number 1, Version 2, the one that was, that I mentioned in council briefing yesterday. But we're not going to vote on it. Then, we're going to take up individually every last individual council member amendment. So we're not going to vote on the first two items that we move because all the council member amendments are pegged to and modeled after and used as the base, the Revised Chair's Package. And so we will then take up Amendment Number 2, which is Councilmember Morales's amendment. If that amendment passes, it would therefore obviate the need to discuss and consider the subsequent amendment because it captures and picks up those amendments. At that point, we would then move on to the, and vote on the Amendment Number 1 as amended by potentially Councilmember Morales's amendment. If Councilmember Morales's amendment does not, Amendment Number 2 does not pass, then we will in turn take up each individual item and vote on each individual amendment before reverting back and finally voting on a potentially amended form of the, quote-unquote, revised Chair's Amendment, which is, again, Amendment 1, Version 2, for those following along. So complex procedurally. If you have any questions, just let me know. But here we go. So, go ahead, Cal.
Good morning, Councilmembers. Calvin Chow with Council Central Staff. My overview, I actually just wanted to say the same thing that Councilmember Saka did, that there are eight amendments in front of you, seven on the agenda, and another one from Councilmember Nelson that is a walk-on. Excuse me. Amendment Number 1 is the Chair's Revised Package, and it will become the new base. You will hear it and we will discuss it, but we will not be voting on it until we hear all the remaining amendments because those remaining amendments do change the Chair's Package. Once we've heard all the amendments and voted on the remainder, we will come back to vote on Amendment 1 and then vote on the underlying legislation. So with that, Councilmember, if you're ready, I can go over your Amendment 1.
Sure.
Okay. So Amendment 1, Version 2, is from Councilmember Saka. It is the Revised Chair's Package. I'll try to focus on the changes from what was presented in committee two weeks ago. This amendment, if you recall, increases the size of the levy from $1.45 billion to $1.55 billion. It raises the estimated bill from about $467 to about $499.
Cal, Cal, pardon me. I'm wondering, actually, if, maybe this is a question for our clerk. Should we move the base originally transmitted bill first before we enter into discussion? Yeah, yeah. So let's do that. So, pardon me, Cal. We'll get back to you in just a moment. So I move that the committee recommends passage of Council Bill 120788. Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded to recommend passage of the bill. Are there any comments? All right. Hearing none. I move to amend Council Bill 12077, or, excuse me, I move to amend Council Bill 120788 as presented on Amendment Number 1, Version 2, on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend Council Bill 120788 as presented on Amendment 1, Version 2. Before I address this amendment, here, here we are. We have Cal, our Central Staff Expert, to provide an overview, and this is an opportunity, colleagues, for you all to ask policy-related questions after he's done.
So I apologize for jumping the gun, but...
No, 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 no.
Show me back into...
No, yeah, you're right on track. Fortunately, I have a handy script here.
So the, the, most of the changes from the draft Chair's Package are included in the spending breakdown. So this is the Attachment A. As you recall, the Chair's Amendment adds $7 million for safer routes to schools, adds $7 million for the neighborhood, for a new neighborhood-scale traffic safety program. It reduces $15.5 million from the neighborhood-initiated safety program. It adds $6 million for the transit passenger safety program, adds $48 million for new sidewalks, and includes some language about prioritizing locations within one mile of schools and transit stops, as well as identifying expectations that programs be delivered in District 5, District 2, and District 1 proportional to where the missing sidewalks are. It adds $15 million for sidewalk safety repair, $10 million for electric vehicle charging, $20 million for freight and goods movement, including $5 million for Leary Way industrial zone safety, and $5 million for a port connection program. It adds $1 million for Oversight Committee auditing and professional services. It adds $1.5 million for property tax relief, outreach, and education. It includes a new section, the Durable Infrastructure Solution Program moves to the good governance and equitable implementation initiative element, and it calls for the development of a long-term strategy for sidewalks, bridges, and roads. It would revise the roadway maintenance program to highlight, to remove 35th Avenue Southwest-Morgan to Holden and add 35th Southwest-Alaska to Morgan instead. It revises that program to include Font Roy Way. It revises the Vision Zero element to identify Raynor Avenue South on the list of priority corridors. It revises the Protected Bike Lanes program to add 12th Avenue from East Madison to Jose Ramirez Al Bridge. It adds North 137th and Roosevelt Way to the Crossing Improvements program. It includes revised language for the Aurora Avenue North Safety Program. It adds Northwest Sixth Avenue from Northwest 58 to Carke Park from the Green, excuse me, to the Neighborhood Greenways project. It makes changes to the description of the Ballard and Magnolia Bridge descriptions. It includes pedestrian improvements on Ballard Avenue and, excuse me, to Ballard Bridge, and the potential for replacement studies, seismic improvements, and emergency access to the description of the Magnolia Bridge in the Bridge Structural Repairs Program. It makes revisions to the Transit Improvements and Light Rail program to add access improvements to sound transit, light rail stations, and future sound transit system expansion. It creates a new category for development of private funding strategy for letting I-5 buy and removes $500,000 from protected bike lanes to cover that cost. It revises the urban forestry program to highlight the support for the central waterfront project and the Pike Pine Corridor landscape maintenance. It revises the pedestrian bike, excuse me, the Protected Bike Lanes improvements to highlight a project in honor of Steve Holsman. And it revised the Transit Access and Access to Light Rail program to include supporting community-based planning for the Graham Street and Chinatown International District light rail stations. The package establishes new eight-year levy appropriations for the, for the entire levy. This is similar to what was established in Move Seattle. It reestablishes the Chair of the Transition Committee as a member of the Levy Oversight Committee, and it adds an aspirational goal for two of the members to have auditing experience. It also requires dashboard reporting of levy programs, again, similar to what has been in place for Move Seattle, and it identifies Attachment A as the basis for reporting on accomplishments. And lastly, there are a number of changes to the recitals. And Councilmember, unless there are questions, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah. Thank you. So, colleagues, are there any policy-related questions for Central Staff? All right. Hearing, let me double-check here. Councilmember Strauss, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have a question. Is this time to make a statement?
Um, let me go ahead. If it's a statement, let me go ahead and tee it up in my own words, I guess. And then, and then we can, can open it up for comments and additional questions, if any. So, I guess first off, a quick housekeeping item. I, so what we're considering here is very complex, highly technical, nitty-gritty transportation policy and resource, resourcing and planning. We're making those decisions right here through the course of this levy and these conversations, and, again, highly complex, very technical. And so I asked Cal to create two versions of Amendment 1. One, that is essentially a red line, kind of track changes version. One that includes that, red line, those red lines and track changes, and is also annotated to, to help facilitate review by members of the public so we can better understand. I know what's going on here, and colleagues, I know, you all know what's going on here, and I've seen, and I've had one-on-one offline conversations with you all, and I've seen some people have charts up on their, on their, on their offices with, like, mapping out, like, this, where did this come from, and who's the source, and why? And, and so I, like, I'm familiar with, with tracing the, the arc of each and every one individual council member amendment and how it ended up in the, quote-unquote, Revised Chair's Package. But I did ask for, for that, so the annotated version to, again, help facilitate review here. And so thank you, Cal, for creating that. And so, housekeeping aside, colleagues, this Revised Chair's Package, it's a balanced proposal. It's specifically designed to consolidate and harmonize to the full extent possible the various amendments from individual council members. It's the direct result of consensus, collaboration, and, again, compromise, all of which are reflected in one comprehensive proposal. It's specifically structured to help streamline voting on this very complex, technical topic. And otherwise, if, if we didn't have as many of these consensus items baked in one package, we'd be here all day and voting on individual elements all day. So, you know, therefore, it's possible that we might not potentially love each and every individual element or feature contained in the broader Chair's Package proposal. But the goal is for us to like the entire package enough to enable this body to consider it as one amendment for purposes, again, of streamlining and simplifying our final voting today. So, in any event, also, colleagues, as you've heard, this Revised Chair's Package has been improved, improved greatly by each and every one of you. Just to name a few of those improvements, Councilmember Morales, because of your work and dedication, this Revised Package includes a stronger focus on Vision Zero and bicycle safety improvements in the South End, critically needed investments. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. We're putting more funding to pedestrian safety improvements and the creation of net-new sidewalks in places where they don't exist, especially District 5. But not just District 5. So thank you for your advocacy on that. That's also complemented by your advocacy, Vice Chair Hollingsworth, to secure more funding to fix already existing sidewalks that we know, some of which are in a bad state of disrepair. Thank you for that. That, along with your advocacy and tireless efforts, Councilmember Rivera, Rivera, for ensuring that our kids have safe routes to schools. And then, in turn, that will ensure that this levy is actually serious about keeping people safe on our streets. So I appreciate your partnership. There's multiple ways, colleagues, to, to influence and shape the contours of this levy. There's the amendment process, and we've seen a few of them, and then there's the pre-introduction process. Making sure we shape what the Revised Chair's Package looks like at the front end rather than go in the amendment process, and we've taken a, a mix approach to all of that. All of it is important and welcome. But, again, Councilmember Rivera, appreciate your, your thought partnership on crafting the package here. Councilmember Strauss, together, we've included a critical, critical funding for many District 6 priorities, a lot of them, including bridge maintenance and modernization for Ballard, for the Ballard and Magnolia Bridges, along with funding for specific new freight investments that will help keep our economy moving. Councilmember Kettle, this is, you've been another strong champion for freight and cargo mobility in this levy package. I appreciate your leadership on that. In addition, your feedback and consultation and advice has resulted in important callouts that will ensure this levy, that our levy projects take the needs of our emergency responders into full account and consideration. But to be honest, I would expect nothing else, nothing less than from the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, always finding a public safety tie, and there is a strong nexus. So thank you for your, your point of view and your leadership on these. Councilmember Wu, you have been an incredible champion of environmentalism and sustainability and our work to address climate change through this package. So I appreciate you and all you do. Last but not least, Council President Nelson, your continued support for a levy that builds in strong oversight and accountability has been critical. You're the, you're the true architect, you're the original architect of the, the good governance that seems to predominate this, this body here. So I appreciate your leadership and conversations, helping to strengthen what we have here. I want to talk for a moment about one important addition that I made, that I believe is truly emblematic of this levy proposal's overall focus on safety. My revised proposed package will call for the creation of a Protected Bike Lane project in West Seattle to be named in honor of Steve Holsman. Steve was a leader in the Seattle cycling community. In December, tragically, he was riding on Marine View Drive when he was hit and killed by a person in a car. I know how important Steve was to both his loved ones and our broader community, including his wife Rita. We've seen here show up over and over again. They have been here just about every single meeting, reminding us, demanding that we, as a body, as a council, as a city, need to do a better job of protecting people on our streets. And through this levy package, we will. It's only right that this project be named in Steve's honor, not just in remembrance of Steve and his legacy, Rita, but as an important reminder to all of us just how critical these investments are in people's everyday lives. Thank you, Rita, for continuing to show up. Thank you for your advice and suggestions and conversations offline. Thank you to Steve's brother as well. Thank you to Steve's brother as well. Steve's life mattered, and so do the countless lives of people that we've lost on our roads over the years. It is my hope and expectation that this levy will be the start of something that can help put us on a better track and better footing to make much more, better, well, much better progress in achieving our Vision Zero goals. All right. So, moving on, I welcome any questions, comments, feedback. Councilmember Strauss, this might be a good time for you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your comments. I'm just going to pull up my notes. I want to thank you for including all of my citywide or definition change amendments, and my two amendments that were district-specific and are not just D6 projects, they are also D4 and D5 projects. I absolutely appreciate including all these amendments in your Chairs Package. The amendments that I included don't just touch District 6, they touch District 1, District 4, District 5, 6, and 7. And so just wanted to clarify, you mentioned that you'd gotten, I'd gotten a lot of District 6 projects in there. There were two that also are broader than just my district. Colleagues, I will be bringing my three district-specific amendments forward as standalone amendments shortly. I just want to take this moment to discuss the changes to the freight programs, which I put forward previously as the Leary Way Investments. I realize that because I was short on time at our last committee meeting, I didn't finish my point entirely. I spoke of changes within the industrial and industrial buffer zones that increase office space and housing. What I didn't mention is that these changes already occurred, and the point that needed to be made is that the movement of freight and goods through these change zones is even more important now than ever because these new zoning changes that we have already made create new pressures on our industrial zones. During these zoning changes, we did increase the protections for the manufacturing maritime and logistic zones, and so while there was a little bit of flexibility put on the buffers and the edges, we increased our dedication to our manufacturing maritime and logistic zones. As a budget note, the, these are the industries that are outperforming national averages in our city as compared to the rest of our revenue sources. To make my request in the levy more focused, I worked with the Chair, Chair Saka, to update the language, just to say specifically that the five, rather than having $10 million in one item, we put $5 million into two items. $5 million used for spot or corridor improvements connecting the maritime manufacturing logistic zones within the Ballard Inner Bay North End Manufacturing and Industrial Center, the NMC, to the lifelines of Interstate 5 or State Route 99. The other $5 million within the Freight Line item will be used for spot or corridor improvements connecting the Port of Seattle facilities through Soto to Interstate 90 or Interstate 5. I believe that these changes will keep our goods moving and better connect our port to I-90, which is a direct connection to the heart of America and all the way out to Boston. Chair, thank you for including these aspects within your Chairs Package, and I look forward to voting yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss, and I'll echo the sentiment that you expressed, like, your amendment, your amendments were, broadly speaking, they're absolutely citywide projects and initiatives. What we're doing here, colleagues, friendly reminder, we are crafting the best transportation package proposal for our entire citywide transportation system. It is true that there are certain individual projects that are cut and proposed in individual districts, but we can't, like, people aren't confined to one district, and like, there's so much cross-pollination, and there are so many dependencies and interdependencies between projects, roads and bridges in one district and another, and so, anyway, I agree, Councilmember Strauss, citywide, and every last one of us, yourself included, also got some, there's some nice things in there that we can all be proud about. So, in any event, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I'm still getting over a long-standing cold, apparently. Thank you, Chair Saka. I want to thank you and your staff, Leila and Elaine, and Calvin on Central Staff. You've all been working really hard these last few months, and you deserve kudos for advancing a strong package. I also want to thank you for meeting with me several times over the last few months to discuss my priorities and for incorporating many of them into the package, including connecting bike fragments in South Seattle and incorporating my focus on Vision Zero for more and better sidewalks across the city. So I want to thank you for that. As my colleagues know, I do have an amendment that we'll be voting on later to expand the levy, and I'll discuss that at that time, but I do want to thank the Chair and his team for some really strong work. Thank you.
Thank you, and I share, I appreciate the partnership, and I want to pass through all the praise and kudos and thanks to my own team as well, Leila Gassar and Chief of Staff Elaine Ko, as well as our Central Staff experts, Calvin, Amelia, Jody, so many of our clerks and people, like, it's a lot to do this, and I'm Chair of this committee, but there are so many people that members of the public just won't see or are less visible, but their work made this thing better, so, and I'm grateful for their guidance and counsel and hard work, so, thank you. Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Chair Saka, and yes, thank you for your collaboration early and often. I really appreciate it. It's been fantastic. Also, thank you to the colleagues here in the dais and remote for the discussions that we had, and also to Mr. Chow from Central Staff and his advice and counsel as we went through this process individually and collectively here. I also want to thank the community, the, you know, the public speakers, the groups that have come many times. As Chair has noted, we've had many repeat people. I appreciate the effort that it takes to come here and to, you know, testify through public comment. Thank you very much. Also, thank you to the groups who've commented here, but also I've met in my office or in different locations, and to the D7, the District 7 community, particularly the District 7 Neighborhood Council, which has, you know, done such a great job in terms of, you know, giving advice and also to, you know, we have a base here that we were working from, so thank you to Mayor Harrell and Director Spots, who are sitting here in the audience, and his team behind him, and the best, and the best briefer that exists here in city government that's behind Director Spots there. Thank you all. And I believe in this levy for its balanced approach to the nuts-and-bolts needs that we have in our city for our transportation. Number one is Vision Zero. We have to work the issues. Sidewalks has been so key, you know, the bike lanes, other efforts to address traffic and pedestrian safety concerns. It is so focused and so needed that we have. I also wanted to note that within Vision Zero, these neighborhood safety-focused funds are also important. We have a, you know, a number of, you know, different funds, but they kind of do the same thing, and I just wanted to pledge again that from the District 7 perspective, those funds will be focused on Vision Zero, on traffic and pedestrian safety. I just wanted to make that clear because I recognize that there's different types of neighborhood funds, but for District 7, they're all going to kind of go for the same place in terms of Vision Zero. Second Bridge is so important, you know, as we know in District 7, you know, the Magnolia Bridge fly over, you know, the Dravis and Emerson Bridges, the Ballard or Fremont Aurora Bridges, the I-5 Bridges. I've said many times, District 7's in reality is peninsula, but it's also a connection to all the other districts, Districts 5, 4, 3, 2. Not so much District 1, but District 1 with West Seattle Bridge knows how important bridges are, so thank you for your leadership on ensuring that bridges were so, you know, central to what we're doing. Also for sustainability, you mentioned Councilmember Wu, but thank you as well for your investments in EV, because this is important, you know, in terms of the sustainability, but it's also important, you know, to ensure that we have, you know, this goes through roads, that our buses, our electric buses have somewhere to go over. I think that's a point that's often missed, and I just wanted to highlight that because our arterials do carry our electric buses. For freight, thank you for your leadership on this and for the community that stood up on this issue. You've heard the speakers here, it is so important, it's so important related to our port, but it's also important for that kind of, that neighborhood piece, as I mentioned in, I think, the last meeting. You know, food deserts could be the lack of a grocery store, but food deserts can also mean, you can have a grocery store, but if freight can't get the goods to that grocery store, you end up in the same place. And so this is why freight is important. And on this point, I'd like to thank you, Councilmember Strauss, who's a partner on this piece, along with yourself, Chair Saka, and others here on the committee. Lastly, good governance underlines everything, and thank you, Council President, for your leadership on this, and this is something that we need to build on. The Oversight Committee is fantastic. I'm not sure if the executive truly loves it, but I think they'll learn to, and I think it'll be fantastic. So bottom line, I support this Chairs Package, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kettle. Councilmember Rivera.
I just want to, thank you, Chair. Can I clarify, are we, we're not yet voting on this?
Not voting, but, you know, ripe opportunity, if you would so like, to comment on the revised Chairs Package, which specifically is Amendment 1, version 2. Yeah.
And will we have an opportunity to comment on it after we go through all the amendments?
Hmm.
Or should we comment now? Sorry, point of clarification.
Yeah, 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 so now would be preferred, but we'll find time later, too.
Then, thank you, Chair. Then I'll say, I too want to echo the gratitude to our staff, Calvin Chow, and folks in your office, Leila and Elaine, and all the folks that help and support us as we are deliberating on all the legislation, and in particular, this legislation, which was, as Councilmember Hollingsworth mentioned, a heavy lift. Councilmember Saka, appreciate all your efforts because I know you worked diligently to meet with all of us individually, behind the scenes, to have thoughtful conversations about how to best incorporate the needs of our particular districts in the package as much as possible. We know that the lists and the inclusions are not exhaustive of what's needed in the city, and yet, you know, I will say, as you and I discussed, adjusted for inflation, the levy renewal would have been $1.2 billion relative to the original Move Seattle levy. This package, of course, adds another $350 million to that in order to address the need for increased infrastructure repairs, expansion of much-needed sidewalks across the city, including the repairing of sidewalks across the city, and of course, of particular importance to constituents in the D4, addressing pedestrian safety and safe routes to schools. We have 22, I've said, we have 22 schools in our district, and it's important to ensure that students are, have routes that are safe, walking to and from school, or riding to and from school, or taking buses to and from school. I deeply appreciate your efforts to work with me and my colleagues on this large and complex, complex project. You also incorporated my changes to ensure accountability, because this is a big package. You worked with, you and your staff worked diligently with us to ensure the Chairs Package reflected our needs, as I said earlier, as much of, as much as possible, and of course, all the transportation improvements and work in this levy are needed across the city for the benefit of all the residents of Seattle, as we move from one district to another as residents of the city. I also appreciated the feedback, very importantly, from the D4 constituents. I know this is a lot to ask of residents. There were many needs to balance to ensure roads, bridges, sidewalks, and Vision Zero goals were addressed. Because of the size of this package, I worked with you, Councilmember Saka, to incorporate changes to add back the accountability language from the Move Seattle levy, requiring ESTOT to come before council for any reallocation of more than 10% between the identified 11 categories in the package, thereby giving council an opportunity to weigh in on changes and also to ensure that investments are being carried out across the city, the entire city. So I want to say again a gratitude to the D4 residents who not just came in chambers, who called, who wrote, who talked to me at the various community meetings that I've attended throughout this process, that were not particular just to the levy, but just as I was out in community, I heard a lot, people are paying attention to this levy, and it is something that we're asking residents, you know, a lot of, and that is something that I know you weighed, I know I weighed, many of our colleagues weighed as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rivera. Facts, you did push hard, and I, for stronger accountability and controls and matching sort of verbiage from the 2015 ordinance authorizing the levy to this one, and so, again, you know, like, this levy is bigger because of you and every last one of you colleagues. All right, let's see, Council President Nelson, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just real quick to orient my colleagues to some of the comments that I'll be making later in response to some of these amendments, and also just to set off the tone that I would like to strike, which is one of gratitude, Chair. As you'll recall, my initial feedback to you when you were asking councilmembers what they wanted, I said, well, don't make it bigger than the mayor's levy and focus on maintaining our existing infrastructure, because as they used to say, and the saying I grew up with was, a stitch in time saves nine, saves nine. And by that, I was really concerned about getting a handle on our maintenance backlog because filling potholes and fixing sidewalks all the time gets more expensive if we're not, you know, making sure that we're repairing on a regular schedule. All of that aside, I did put forward an amendment to transfer $20 million of the additional, well, of the doubling of the mayor's original amount for sidewalks, so the mayor's proposal had $63 million for new sidewalks, you put in an additional $63 million. I put forward an amendment to transfer $20 million to sidewalk repair, and I really appreciate you carrying that sentiment forward. It was reduced to $15 million, which is fine, and that maintains the proportion of new versus repaired sidewalks in the mayor's budget, but thank you very much for hearing me. It wasn't clear to me that ESTOT had the capacity to even do that much more work, and I'm, you know, I'm skeptical still, but we'll see with the implementation plan, but I really do appreciate you not pushing back on that impulse to make sure that we were prioritizing repair also. I also want to thank you for including the annual allocation for right-of-way improvements that were contractually obligated to perform or to provide as part of the waterfront project, and I'll mention that there is a change to my, I have an amendment that just adds a tweak to that, but I wanted to thank you for that. And then finally, I had initially asked the Chair to include $7 million for a new, not a new, a revamped Neighborhood Street Fund program in response to feedback from public comment, and that was previously funded under the Move Seattle levy. Unfortunately, that was not included, but I appreciate that you did include a $7 million for a neighborhood-scale traffic safety program, which can support many of the same projects in the same sort of spirit. So I know how hard you worked to reflect councilmembers' priorities in here. As a citywide, I do have a different perspective, and so I acknowledge that, and I think you did the best you could, and thank you very much for all of your work.
Thank you, appreciate that. Let's see, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you very much, Chair Saka, and I too just want to take this opportunity to thank you for all the collaboration that you participated in with myself and with all of us, actually. It felt like it was a very collegial and thoughtful process, and I cannot be more grateful than your willingness to continue to hear me beat the drum about more, more, more sidewalks, so, and looking at a way to really try to be equitable in the distribution of sidewalks across our city. I know not all districts benefit from it, although they all benefit from sidewalk repair, and I appreciate the emphasis on providing more money for sidewalk repair. But anyway, just wanted to thank you for listening to that. I did drop a number of my amendments because I had to decide what is most important to my district and really to the city as a whole, and it came down to sidewalks and making sure that that's And it came down to sidewalks and making sure that that's where I focus my energies. And then also looking at the accountability piece, and I appreciate you working with me around the infrastructure solutions and getting some clarity and some timelines there for the larger, big projects ahead of us and giving us, allowing the department to use whatever timeframe they need, but giving them a date upon which they need to get back to us about what those ideas are for how we're going to address some pretty major challenges going forward. So anyway, I did, I do think you came up with a great package. As you said, it's a give and take. And I'm always going to vote for more sidewalks. But anyway, thank you so much for your collaboration on this.
All right. Thank you. And Councilmember Wu.
I'll make this really quick, because I know we want to get to the votes. But I also want to echo my colleagues' thank you and gratitude to you and your staff, as well as central staff, and to the public for sending in all the comments. I'm so excited that this package will do the most amount of good for the most amount of people, especially investments in sidewalks and bridges and all the basics. And so I want to thank you for the collaboration. Councilmember Saka has been meeting with many of us once a week and just cornering us in the hallways and talking about his package and all the new, and different amendments being proposed. So I know a lot of work went into this, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all. And, you know, again, I'll pass through and all the praise and gratitude to my staff and our shared central staff experts for their, all their hard work on this. It's a lot, but we're almost there. So, and a couple of comments calling out the smaller scale. So that was probably the biggest, as we can probably see in this revised package, that was the biggest tension area. We all agree, we all agree on the need for smaller-scale neighborhood-level safety improvements. Question is, you know, so you can call it safe routes to schools, you can call it like District Project Fund, where I think the idea, although there's no clear guidance or direction yet, that'll come later. But District Project Fund, where we individually, like as councilmembers get, like determine which specific smaller-scale projects in our districts would be covered. Or what I did now is create, what we did in this revised Chair's package is create a fund that could be allocated towards all of the above, or one of those things, or like something else to cover those specified items in that, as described specifically in that category. But so we all agree that we need smaller-scale safety improvements. The question is, who decides? And so, you know, that, this final revised package, where we landed, I think reflects a consensus and helps us move this thing along as well. So, and finally, I will note that, and I think it's clear, but just for crystal clarity, we are not voting on Amendment One just yet, which is the revised Chair's package at this point, because Amendments Two through Eight are amendments to what is now the base Chair's revised package. So we will get through these amendments before finally voting on the revised Chair's package. All right. That said, I will, are there any comments? Any final comments on Amendment One, Version Two?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I move Amendment Two as presented in the package.
Second?
All right. It has, it is moved and seconded to amend Amendment One, Version Two, as presented on Councilmember Morales's Amendment Two. Before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask central staff to provide an overview of this. And this is an opportunity, colleagues, for you all to ask policy-related questions, if you have any.
So councilmembers, Amendment Number Two would increase the size of the levy to 1.7 billion. This would increase the average, excuse me, the median assessed value property tax to approximately $547 in the first year. It would revise the eight-year levy appropriations consistent with a $1.7 billion levy, and it would make a number of revisions to the spending breakdown. This includes adding back funding for the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Program, adding 30 million for Arturo roadways to cover some of the council priorities that were established in the Chair's package. Add $5 million specifically for the Graham and Chinatown International District Light Rail Station stationary planning. Add 14.5 million for new sidewalks, 10 million for sidewalk safety repair, 5 million for crossing improvements, 5 million for neighborhood greenways, 20 million for protected bike lanes, 20 million for the Brook-Gilman Trail extension. It would also add 10 million for the Ballard Avenue-Curbless Street proposal and 15 million for the urban forestry to support planting of street trees and maintenance and equity priority areas.
All right. Councilmember Morales, as sponsor of Amendment Two, you are recognized in order to address it.
Thank you very much, Chair Saka, and thanks, thanks, Cal. Before I get into my amendment, I want to take some time to ground us in why I think we're all hearing this transportation levy is so important. I've spoken many times about the high rate of traffic fatalities in my district, but the fatalities are happening all over the city. And increasing our investment in public safety infrastructure would dramatically change our ability to achieve our Vision Zero goals. And so I want to honor the families and the individuals by reading out the names of people who have died on our roadways this year, as of July 2, 2024. On January 11, Brian was killed while walking on Elliott Avenue and struck by a motorist. On January 14, Mousi was driving on MLK and killed in their vehicle. On January 24, Nicholas was walking between Fourth and Diagonal Avenue South when he was struck and killed by a car. On January 27, Yasmin was in a car on Airport Way when she was struck and killed by another vehicle. On March 1, Nyet was walking on 15th Avenue Northwest when they were struck and killed by a car. On May 1, Forrest was on a motorcycle on First and Lucille when they were killed by a dump truck. On May 7, Matrina was walking on Union Street when she was hit by a car and passed away due to a head injury in the hospital days later. On May 23, we saw three transportation-related deaths in one day. Stephen was walking on Aurora when he was killed by a vehicle. Jacob was on a motorcycle when he was hit on Aurora and 137. Suzanne was killed in a car on Fourth and Washington when she was rear-ended. On May 24, John was walking on Olive and Minor when he fell on our sidewalk and was hit by a car. On May 26, Cheryl was hit by a car on 12th and Weller. On May 29, Eunice died while traveling in a car on MLK Way. On June 3, an individual on a motorcycle was killed at North 80th Street. And we just heard during public comment that someone else died on Aurora last night. Over the last few months, we, as a council, have heard loud and clear from constituents across every district in the city that people want a bold transportation levy package that prioritizes safety investments for all of us. As we've all said, this council has a once-in-a-decade opportunity to shape our city's transportation investments to center mobility and safety for everyone who uses our streets. And while Seattle has had a goal to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injuries since 2015, we've seen fatalities increase across Washington State and across the city. So at the last Select Committee, I worked with my team and with central staff to add up the proposed amendments of every council member for sidewalks, pedestrian improvement, freight, and more. And those things totaled about $150 million. Increasing the Chair's package will cost the average homeowner an additional $48 a year, or about $4 a month. That means for an additional $4 a month, we can implement a levy package that prioritizes safety and incorporates every council member's amendments without pitting our amendments against one another and without reducing funds from one priority category for another. I do want to call out one element in this amendment. The Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program. As somebody has said recently, this program is important because it starts to repair the harm that started when we built our highways and freight routes through BIPOC communities and low-income communities, not just in the South End, but in West Seattle and North Seattle and the Central District. This program is important. It is not just another community pot of money. It is very specifically meant to address the racial equity harms that have been caused throughout our community, particularly areas with high equity analysis. So it helps ensure that the needs of communities of color and vulnerable communities are met by co-creating projects with the community, with the community, focusing on relationship building with our neighbors and incorporating communities into the decision-making process. So while I am very excited about the idea of having discretionary funds for each district council member, I think it's really important that that not come at the expense of this program that was very intentionally created to address very specific harm across the city, but particularly in communities of color across the city. We can't put a price on safety, and safety comes in all forms. We have the power to do something about all of these collisions and deaths that we keep hearing about. And my amendment would fund every council district's priorities, every safety priority that was identified by my colleagues. And I will say that if this passes, it would also get us closer to ending discussion on this particular agenda item, since most of the subsequent amendments are already included here. These are investments in our community's health and safety. These are basic public safety infrastructure, and they will improve our city for decades to come. We can't afford to wait to be bold in our vision of what Seattle streets could look like. Lives are quite literally depending on it every day. Colleagues, I know this is a big ask. I think we've all demonstrated our commitment to keeping our neighbors safe, and I ask for your support on this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Councilmember Moore.
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. I wanted to thank you, Councilmember Morales, for your bold initiative to build on an already robust package for an inclusive levy that really would deliver on all the various competing transit priorities, all of which are important to our community and all of which ultimately focus on making this a safer and more equitable community and one in which all modes of transportation are of equal value and are equally, provide equally for all. So it is a big ask, but I think I appreciate you being willing to put it out there for our consideration. I appreciate you, your speaking with my office, and I know all the other offices, about, you know, what is it that we are hoping to achieve with this, and being willing to run with that and give us an opportunity for that additional consideration. And as I said in my earlier remarks, I will always vote for more sidewalks, because I really do believe they are fundamental to a truly fair and equitable pedestrian, well, they're fundamental to a city and to pedestrian equity and mobility. So for those reasons, I am going to be voting in favor of your amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Council President.
Thank you. I am concerned about this amendment, because I feel that it could put the, if passed, it could put the passage of the transportation levy in jeopardy at the ballot box in November. And that would be disastrous for the future of our growing city. We've heard that our residents are being squeezed out of Seattle and displaced, and that's largely due to increasing housing affordability, unaffordability. And polling on this specific ballot measure may indicate a soft willingness to pay incrementally more from, you know, up to 1.7. But these polls, whenever they're put before the voters or likely voters, no matter what the ballot measure, be it housing, or parks, or transportation, never really tells the voters how much they're already paying in an aggregate based on the increase of, the cumulative increase of each of our levies. And so I am concerned about the cause, how much this will add to the cost of not just property taxes, but people's rents. And we do need to recognize that even in progressive Seattle, tax fatigue is a thing. We hear it more and more, and there are other polls that suggest the same. Our people, our voters, our residents want to see that we are delivering on basic services and first, before being asked to pony up more money. So the size is one factor, but as I said in my opening comments, I'm also concerned about ESTOT's ability to deliver on an increased list of projects, not necessarily list, but increased amounts per the categories in Attachment A. According to the Q1, Q1 report, levy report from 2024, which was dated June 7, the, it appears that there was $19.9 million of underspending in Q1. And so, you know, the state legislature has strong guardrails on allocations for different projects. And I recognize that we will be asking ESTOT to put forward an implementation plan, but that is, I just think it's wrong to collect more money than we're actually able to spend on projects that we say are essential and that year, quarter-to-quarter and year-to-year get unbuilt. So that is why, those are the two main reasons why I will be voting against this. But my vote is not a vote against, against Vision Zero, against safety. Clearly, that is important. I think that there are other ways that are also mentioned in the resolution, other ways to improve safety, which does have to do, as some of the public commenters have mentioned, on enforcing our existing traffic laws and making sure that the revenues from our enforcement cameras are being used for safe routes to school and other measures. So I don't think that anybody here is against safety, no matter what their vote on this particular amendment, but I just wanted to signal why I will be voting no. But thank you very much for the, for bringing forward the sentiments that we all share, Councilmember Morales.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Chair Saka, and thank you, Councilmember Morales, for this amendment. I appreciate very much the need for more transportation infrastructure to include what is in this amendment. Though so often over the years, I've noted the inflationary aspects of council actions from, you know, working in the community in Queen Anne and other areas within District Seven. And, you know, I've seen how the impacts are real. You know, you can, you know, just try to get a new roof, get your house painted, replace a galvanized water line. We just had a committee meeting with Seattle Public Utilities, talking about, you know, supporting side sewer line, you know, replacements because of the high costs. And thinking about SPU's rate charges, or Puget Sound Energy, Seattle City Light, we're on the regional water quality, you know, looking at what's in the future. The rate pieces are going to be climbing. And this is all expensive due to the, you know, the local inflationary pressures. And I know this sounds very much like a homeowner kind of conversation right now, but it's also for renters. For every landlord who's dealing with these same pressures, this gets passed to renters and as an expense in that business. And one thing I wanted to highlight, too, that the 800K number is a number that's pushed out, but that's what King County assessors say. Somebody may have bought that house at 200,000. So that 800 is a four times, usually people buy it, particularly in this market, at the top of their budget, you know, what they can afford. So even if they bought it at 400, that's a doubling. So these tax rates and the charges that show up double or quadruple what may be. So it's not like everybody's bought that house at 800K and has this, oh, it's just going to be 400. It is based on the economics of each family in terms of where and how they bought their home and how it plays out. And this goes for above it as well, in terms of maybe 800 was the limit for that family, but their home is much more now. That is, again, pressures that each of these families are facing. And often, this challenge is that there's limited capacity. You know, this is something that Council President was just alluding to. And, you know, when demand outstrips it, we end up getting less for each dollar spent. You know, this local inflationary piece, you know, in terms of like what the council's doing, the amount of money we're placing, which is all very good in a sense of what we're trying to achieve, but also has inflationary pressures locally, which in turn means we get less for each dollar spent as we move forward. So we need to be mindful of that. And also, I should, I should note that becoming a stay-at-home dad, which I'm quite proud of. And also, I should I should note that becoming a stay-at-home dad, which I'm quite fortunate and privileged to have been before I took on this role, helps inform my perspective as well, because I saw firsthand how families navigate trying to afford life in Seattle. At first, I saw it with childcare. Again, I was very fortunate to be a stay-at-home dad in terms of the challenges that families were facing on that. But even in the basic necessities, you know, with the pandemic, everything increased. I know very well that a half gallon milk went from 267 to like 499, and this is across the board. So these pressures are on those families, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're a renter, whatever it may be. And I'm concerned generally, you know, about the affordability crisis that we're facing. I'm very concerned because there's rumblings about it now. I've seen it in Seattle Times, I've seen it in The Stranger. But my concern is when we get to November, things like this tend to, you know, build up and it may, but at risk, the levy. So as much as I appreciate and support very much the different pieces in the amendment, I will I will be voting no on it for those very reasons.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you. I want to thank Chair, Councilmember Morales for putting together this package. While I do acknowledge that, you know, getting our goal to Vision Zero or achieving our goal to Vision Zero is of paramount importance. People are dying on our roads, and that is important, and we should all work towards Vision Zero. I am really worried about affordability. I read the Racial Equity Toolkit where they did analysis on the impact of taxes on low-income and BIPOC communities in Seattle. They now, they did analysis on that, and I kind of bookmarked it. But to sum it up, I think it, our tax system in Washington disproportionately impacts specific racial populations, communities of color, aging adults, low-income communities. Key findings, property taxes have more of a negative impact on BIPOC renters. 100% of these taxes are passed from landlords to tenants. There's other other key findings here that makes me really worried about affordability regarding these key communities that have not seen benefits to transportation investments through the property taxes, especially in our communities of color. And so I'm really worried about affordability, and I'm also really worried, as many have said, the risk that this does not pass. And then we would not have any funding for any transportation, I guess, projects going forward. And so I will, I support Councilmember Saka's amendment because I think that strikes a good balance. I would love to be able to support Councilmember Morales, but I think we would have to go to the state level and really advocate for progressive taxation. We have one of the most regressive systems in the nation, and I think we need to first attack that before before leveraging more transportation taxes in our levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Chair. I want to acknowledge and I appreciate Councilmember Morales coming to talk to me about this bill because I always appreciate the partnership. And I, as you've heard me say a million times, we can agree to disagree, but it's important that we always work together and always reach out to each other when we have an idea. And so I appreciate the collaboration there or you coming to talk to me about this particular package ad that you've made. I will say that we've heard from other council members up here about the concern about the increase in the funding for the levy overall. When the mayor sent down his package, I heard from constituents who are very concerned about the, they had sticker shock, and we've we've added to it as we've talked about. We've talked about why this would be even an additional ad, and it is one that folks in the district and that I've heard at various community meetings have concerns about. Folks are coping with inflated prices of everyday necessities, particularly post-pandemic, and they're feeling overburdened, and I'm really sensitive to that. You know, we also know, and I will say, you know, renters also are impacted by this because oftentimes property owners, when their property tax increases, they pass on or have to pass on some of that cost to renters, which we know also, you know, overwhelmingly impact folks that, you know, can't even afford to purchase their own homes in the city. So I'm sensitive to that as well, and I'm sensitive to the cost to folks in underserved communities that will be, that are impacted by this price increase. We also know, and I've heard about a shortage of construction workers in the city, which has impacted our ability to deliver projects on time. We know that we're still completing projects from the original Move Seattle levy. Those are not completed, and I've heard from constituents who are very concerned about that. And so, you know, that is real. You know, we can add the cost, but if we can't deliver on the projects because we don't have the people power that we need to complete the projects, it's not going to make the difference that we all really want to make together. I do believe that we all, sitting up here and working with our constituents, whether they're district or citywide, all have all care and agree that we need to make investments to pedestrian safety and Vision Zero. We need more sidewalks. We need safe routes to schools. We need to improve roads for not just folks that are in cars, for our transportation system, which I'm always advocating for people to take. And I think we all agree on that, and so I appreciate your efforts, Councilmember Morales. I will be voting no for the expansion based on my concerns, just in general, about continuing to increase this package and from what I've heard from my constituents, but appreciate your thoughtfulness. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Strauss.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues. I just wanted to take a moment to clarify for you colleagues. While I appreciate the amendment, the sponsor did include my amendments within this package before checking in with me. I will say I absolutely appreciate being thought of. So as I said to you in private, I say in public, thank you for including me within this. I will say two of my three amendments, I believe, are able to be funded with unaccountable funding line items within the current levy. I do appreciate being included in here, however, I will be abstaining on this motion today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. All right. Are there any final comments on Amendment Number Two? Councilmember Rivera.
Can I just make a final remark?
Yeah, yeah.
Please. Okay. Thank you, colleagues. I appreciate understanding where everybody's coming from. I will say that, just for the viewing public, we did receive thousands of emails and dozens of folks came and testified about their willingness to support a levy at this size. Our city's polling also supports a $1.7 billion levy and even demonstrates support for a $1.9 billion levy. I will note that inflation for SDOT projects is up 67% over the last levy, when the last levy was passed, which is, of course, part of the reason why we need additional funding to complete the projects. Nevertheless, I think I know where this is going. I do hope that my colleagues who are worried about the impact of property taxes as one of the few tools that cities have to pay for local government services will support greater progressive revenue in the fall as we have that discussion about how we're going to pay for the things we need to pay for in this city. Ultimately, whether or not this levy passes is not up to the council, it's up to the voters. And voters have demonstrated that they support investing in a transportation system that gives people choices for how to get around safely, conveniently, and affordably. I think we've heard for the last several months that folks would support this kind of a levy, and I will close there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. All right. If there are no final comments on the proposed Amendment Number Two, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Number Two?
Okay. Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Abstain.
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Nay.
That was a no? Okay, cool. Chair Saka?
No.
Okay. So Chair, that is two in favor, six opposed, and one abstention.
All right. The motion fails, and Amendment Two is not adopted. Are there any further comments? So this is where we're going to pick up the movement and introduction and consideration of subsequent Councilmember amendments in numerical order. So again, the motion fails, and Amendment Two is not adopted. Are there any comments on Amendment One, Version Two? And this is where Councilmember Strauss will come in and...
Chair, just checking, are you hoping to move Amendment Three, or are we going back to Amendment One?
That's right.
Okay, great. Thank you. I move Amendment Three to Council Bill 120788.
Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend specifically Amendment, and if I'm wrong, correct me. I think you were you were talking about moving and seconding Amendment One, Version Two, as presented in Councilmember Strauss's Amendment Three.
Councilmember Strauss was amending the chair's revised package in Amendment One, Version Two.
Yep, yep. So everything I just said, before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask central staff to provide an overview of this, and this is an opportunity for members to ask policy-related questions.
Councilmembers, Amendment Three from Councilmember Strauss adds a new program for the Burke-Gilman Trail extension along Market and Leary Avenue in the bicycle safety element. It adds $20 million for this purpose, and it reduces $20 million in the arterial roadway maintenance program. That funding is earmarked for grant match and project readiness within the paving program.
All right. Thank you, Calvin. Councilmember Strauss, as sponsor, you are now recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna, this will probably be my longest speaking portion of the meeting, so apologies in advance, and I'm going to address the funding, stakeholder outreach and input, including the work between SDOT and the residents of the Ballard Landmark, and then a quick summary. And Chair, I heard from the last time, the last committee meeting, that I was breaking up and hard to hear, so if that's happening, please just interrupt me. The funding for this amendment comes from, utilizes the grant match and project readiness line item within the arterial roadway and maintenance. This funding does not cut any projects. In effect, this line item is unaccountable funding because it's a $26 million that are not associated with any single project. Yes, there are oftentimes cost overruns on projects and additional, there's just additional money for projects, and that's that's throughout. In the past, we've oftentimes used real estate excise tax to fund those types of gaps. Real estate excise tax has been down for the last few years, which is why you haven't heard about it being used. And when it does return, because it will, we will see it used regularly for this type of project in particular. Centering in back on the, and so essentially, this amendment brings accountability to a line item that is not associated with any project in the levy, any one project within the levy. What this project does do is complete the missing link of the Burke-Gilman Trail. As I said last time in my first meeting, Burke-Gilman Missing Link was in 1994, 30 years ago, and over these last three decades, we've witnessed inextricable conflict. In my time in office, I proposed a new way of completing the missing link that has broad support from both the bicycling and industrial stakeholders. I'll get into talking about this outreach right now, but as you heard today, possibly for the first time in my life, both the North Seattle Industrial Association and the Cascade Bicycle Club spoke at public comment in support of this amendment. There have literally been press conferences in the past that have occurred completing the missing link, and yet it is still not complete. Today, we do have broad support before doing a press release or or press statement. As I mentioned at the last meeting, some commercial businesses still have some concerns, and SDOT is working directly with tenants along the route and property owners to meet their needs. The Ballard Landmark residents are a group that SDOT is continuing to work with directly. I've met with them a number of times. And as the 30% design of this project is published shortly, you'll see many of the concerns from the residents addressed, and I will still say that there is more work to do to make the trail even safer for the residents. Between the 10% and 30% design, SDOT met many times with the residents of the landmark, and there are changes to the design which will be published at 30% as well. Between 30% and final design, there will be many benchmarks, 60, 80, 60, 90% designs, and there will be more opportunities to improve how this design works for the residents of the Ballard Landmark. On the website today is the 10% design, where the front door of the Ballard Landmark does open up to a 10-foot sidewalk with a 10-foot trail and then a 5-foot buffer. And residents are correct that in the 10% design, there is no buffer between the sidewalk and the trail in front of their front door. When SDOT releases the 30% design shortly, you will see the product of SDOT working with the landmark residents. There will be a full side, the 10-foot sidewalk at the front door, and then separating the trail from the sidewalk will be the Ballard Landmark driveway, so that seniors don't have to cross the trail to reach their cars and to create the largest possible buffer between the full sidewalk and the trail. I know SDOT, and I know I am committed to creating a safe environment in front of the Ballard Landmark because their safety is the key to the success of completing the Burke-Gilman Trail Missing Link. And I will take this moment to say, we will continue to work with these residents because we have to make it as safe as possible. I'm going to now shift into summarizing about this amendment. In the last, in last year's maritime industrial zoning changes, the first zoning changes in the industrial zone since 2007, we added flexibility to Leary Way, which, and increased protections for industrial zoning on Shilshul Avenue. Leary now has zoning that allows some housing and a commercial zone, whereas Shilshul is now within the most protected industrial zone in our city. I'll also address some of the public comments that I heard today, and I shared this last time. Yes, this amendment is more expensive than putting a 10-foot wide strip of asphalt through an industrial zone because the proposal that is before you today fixes the broken sidewalks. It creates a 25 to 35-foot wide area that includes the sidewalks, multi-use trail, and buffer zones, as compared to Shilshul, which is a narrow strip of asphalt through an industrial area without a sidewalk. Supporting this amendment, and I'm just going to close here, Chair, supporting this amendment, colleagues, gives you an opportunity to help put a three-decade argument to rest and be assured that we will continue to work with the residents of the Ballard Landmark to ensure their safety. And again, summarizing here, never before have I ever heard North Seattle Industrial Association and Cascade Bicycle Club on the same side of a Burke-Gilman issue. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Are there any comments on Amendment Three? Council President Nelson?
I just have some questions right now for central staff. Cal, so this uses $20 million of a fund that is in total $26 million, is that correct?
The executive has estimated as part of the paving program that $26 million would be available to do some project readiness and to go seek additional grants, be available for grant match, and that is the line item that Councilmember Strauss has identified.
Okay, so have, I've asked this in the in the past, not in as clear of a way, but how much, so it would leave $6 million left in a grant match program, and so have you looked at what projects could potentially lose that match if this was to go forward and and the $20 million could be used just for this one project?
The projects aren't identified at this time. It's it's money that's set aside over the course of eight years of the levy, the idea being that as grant opportunities arise, then that is a revenue source that you would have available to look for those opportunities, but at this time, I'm not aware of specific projects that have been identified.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Chair Saka. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. You know, I definitely look for a solution to the Burke-Gilman Trail, but I wanted to ask Mr. Chow regarding the, you know, kind of following up on the council president, the grant match and project readiness piece. Usually, using the last levy, you know, this grant money, the 26, which would be allocated between this and the next amendment, what would that be expected to generate in terms of additional monies that are being matched to that grant?
I don't know what the current estimate is for road projects, but I believe I would expect something on the order of maybe about 40 to 50% type of leverage is what I would expect. But I honestly, I have not looked to see what our requirements have been or our success has been on grants with Move Seattle.
So I note that we have leaders from ESTA in the audience. I know they weren't like on the agenda, but Bill LaBord, would it be out of order if we asked him to come and comment on that?
You can invite him.
Yeah, so you're invited up here if you'd like, ESTA, Bill LaBord, to... What's that? What's it? Yeah, that's fine.
40 to 50 is about the right range for projects that we can leverage with federal dollars. So we would only... There are projects that would not be eligible for federal funding, but for the projects that would be eligible, that would seek federal funding for... We would expect a 40 to 50% range in leveraging.
So possibly the $26 million could mean $40 million. So this is a $40 million decision regarding the sourcing of this, essentially, roughly? I'm not asking for any direct, you know, just, you know, at the top end, $40 million. And we could address this also through the regular budget process as we work through ESTA's budget, you know, in the standard budgeting process.
Are you speaking about the Burke-Gilman Trail proposal?
Yes.
Yes, yes, you could.
And to be honest, the next one, too.
Yes, you could.
Thank you. Are there any final questions or comments on Amendment Number Three? I will... So Councilmember Wu, and then Councilmember Strauss, go ahead, you can comment.
What projects have typically been funded previously from this project funding? Sorry. See that.
It's... The idea is that as grants become available, then we look at what is in our roster, and we identify which of our projects that are in the works or ideas for projects that we hope to get done, and try to mash them up with the grant availability as those programs go. So I'm off the top of my head, I'm not sure which specific paving programs have received federal funding, but it is a big part of how we do fund these capital projects.
What was the funding for it last year, or last levy?
The amount of leverage we had in Move Seattle for paving.
Paving?
Yeah. Sorry, staff will be trying to answer that question. Apparently, it's about $100 million.
Councilmember Wu, or you have any other?
Oh, no.
Okay. That was awkward. All right, cool. Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues, for some really good questions. I'm just going to summarize what we've all heard, that the projects that would utilize the funding within this line item are unknown. What I'll also share is some historical context, is that what has been done in the past are projects that need match or additional funding in these moments to receive federal or other grants. These projects receive increases in the annual or biannual budget, whether it is from REIT, real estate excise tax, or general fund, or a mixture of both. And so I will note in this moment that if grant match needs arise for projects within the arterial roadway maintenance subset, we will be ready to support these efforts, as has been done almost every year of the past levy. Because what is maybe not widely known is that REIT and general fund dollars are added to ESTA's budget every single year, and we always are above the minimum general fund requirement that is explicitly stated in the levy. And so while what we have are a number of known unknowns, what I can also share is that there is a pathway to making sure that ESTA, these projects, and our city are whole while you are able to support this amendment that increases accountability within this levy. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues. And thank you, Bill, for jumping in there.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. So I'm seeing no other hands or comments. So if there are no final comments or questions on this Amendment Number Three, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Number Three? Oh, excuse me. Council President, go ahead.
Are we... Do we have... Do we have the same level of federal funding in the past recent years? I mean, has our reliance on gap funding increased?
I would say that right now, the levy is not pledging as much of a leverage commitment as we anticipated in Move Seattle, partly because we, you know, we don't necessarily know what the grant environment's going to look like over the next eight years. So we are trying to be a little more conservative in our estimates of what grants might be available. But beyond that, I don't know specifically what was promised at that time.
Okay, because it's my understanding that the administration has recently lowered the grant match threshold for municipalities to 20%. And so that... I was just wondering how, when we're talking about the number of projects and how far that money could go, that's what's factoring into my thinking as well. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Kettle?
I was just curious, since we do have the bench, you know, does ESTA have a formal position related to the grant match line item as relates to these two amendments?
You're welcome to come comment on it.
And to basically...
If you so choose.
And it lines up with what Councilmember Strauss... Again, I support the idea. My concern is, you know, are we, you know, giving up, you know, that 40, you know, that 40, 50%? And could that be taken care of, you know? Because I'm pledging to support the Burke-Gilman process and also the 14th, definitely the 14th. But, you know, how best to do that?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Greg Spots, ESTA Director, thank you for the opportunity to discuss this with you. ESTA doesn't have a position on this particular amendment, but to explain the thinking of the executive in the making the original levy proposal, the thinking was to be positioned well to respond quickly when grant opportunities arise and take advantage of them. The current levy to Move Seattle attracted more than $400 million of grant money at significant for a $930 million levy. So the thinking of the executive in proposing it as it is was to have a ready source of match money, so that if a grant came along that was well-aligned with one of our projects, we wouldn't have to potentially pursue some sort of council process to identify matching funding, and we could get an application in by the deadline, having a project readiness fund of match money available. That was the thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Spots. And I just want to say, I support both projects, but I want to support Councilmember Strauss as the Budget Chair to work through the ESTA budget to get both. Both are very important, the first two. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any final comments or questions, colleagues? All right. Councilmember Strauss?
Thank you, Chair. Just using the typical procedure that is present in all meetings where the sponsor of the amendment has the last word, that's all I'm saying here, I think that questions are real, and that, again, I pledge to make sure that if grant match opportunities come up quickly, that we will be able to respond quickly. I think that there are more mechanisms available to us than what Director Spots just alluded to and is overall correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Number Three?
All right. Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
No.
Chair, that is four in favor and five against.
All right. The motion fails, and Amendment Number Three is not adopted. Are there any comments on Amendment One, Version Two? And this is where Councilmember Strauss, Amendment Number Four, will come in.
Chair, I move Amendment Four to your Chair's package.
Second. Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend Amendment One, Version Two, as presented on Amendment Four. Before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask central staff to provide an overview, and this is an opportunity for members to ask policy-related questions.
Councilmember, Amendment Four from Councilmember Strauss would add the 14th Avenue Northwest to the list of projects for the paving program and the arterial roadway maintenance program. The anticipated cost of this project is $6 million, and again, it would identify the same... Would intend to use the same line item for grant match and project readiness.
All right. Councilmember Strauss, as sponsor, you are recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Chair. I will address the funding source. Just to state that if you go out to 14th Avenue Northwest, you'll find a street last updated in the 1930s. There are train tracks in the road that have been there since the train bridge was there, since before 1936. The medians are dirt rock and potholes large enough to eat your entire tire. The medians also create eight points of conflict in each intersection. My proposal removes the 100-year-old railroad tracks and puts travel lanes down the center of the right-of-way, reducing the points of conflict from 8 to 4, which is more similar to most intersections, and retains parking by moving the parking often median to back-end angle parking along the street. ESTA recently added four-way stops to the intersection after many collisions that rolled vehicles over and pushed vehicles at high rates of speed into buildings. And while these stop signs have, to date, stopped these collisions that roll cars over and damage buildings, they have not stopped the collisions. In summary, this proposal removes dangerous points of conflict for people, updates the roadway so that we do not have arid 100-year-old railroad tracks, and prepares us for the incoming light rail station. Thank you, Chair. Nothing more to add. There are a vote.
All right. Colleagues, any other comments, questions on Amendment Number Four? Hearing that, I will say, out of all the amendments I've seen from Councilmember Strauss, this one is the least costly, and I'll leave it there. Go ahead, Councilmember Kettle.
Chair Saka, I appreciate the opportunity. And again, this is of the three, the one I support the most. But as noted by Director Spots, you know, from a good governance point of view, in terms of how you structured that, that program, and to be nimble to attract more money, I think it's just a smart way of doing business. I recognize the points in terms of the sponsor, Councilmember Strauss. But I will say publicly here now that I will... If this does not pass, that I will work with Councilmember Strauss through the normal budgeting process to ensure the 14th Avenue is done.
All right. Any other comments on Amendment Four? If not, Councilmember Strauss, you are recognized for the last word.
No further comments.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Four?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
No.
And Chair Saka?
No.
That's three in favor, six opposed.
All right. The motion fails, and Amendment Four is not adopted. Are there any comments on Amendment One, Version Two? Councilmember Strauss, this is where your other amendment.
Thank you. I move Amendment Five to your Chair's package.
Second.
All right. It's... So we're considering it. This is Amendment Five, okay. It is moved and seconded to amend Amendment One, Version Two, as presented in Amendment Five. Before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask central staff to provide an overview of this, and this is an opportunity for colleagues, for you all, to ask policy-related questions.
Councilmembers, Amendment Five from Councilmember Strauss adds a new category, the Ballard Avenue curbless street project in the People's Streets and Public Spaces element. It adds $5 million for this purpose, and it takes that money from the new sidewalks program, $2.5 million from new sidewalks, and $2.5 million from sidewalk safety repair.
All right. Councilmember Strauss, as the amendment sponsor, you are recognized to speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. This is a new type of street that we're proposing, listed here as a curbless street, but it could also be considered a sidewalk street, because the level of the sidewalk and the street are the same, so that we are able to better use sidewalk space and the street space. My original amendment used sidewalk funds and electric vehicle funds. Proposal here is only using sidewalk funds, because I'm trying to keep my amendments within the type of funding that is like what the project is. However, noticing that that is not falling on listening ears. Colleagues, if you support this project, but not the funding source, please do work with me, let me know. I'll try to find another funding source. Still, I believe the sidewalk funding to be an appropriate source, because we have heard from analysts, it's unclear that ESTA can deliver the sidewalks we desire, even if we put that money there. And this project will move forward our sidewalk policy. What we've been doing for the last four years is creating a cafe in Merchant Street on Ballard Avenue, and since the beginning, there's been a desire to have pergolas against the building of Ballard Avenue, rather than in the street. By doing so, it will create much more welcoming environment, better fabric of the neighborhood, because when you have a sidewalk going through your cafe, it feels different than if you can imagine yourself in a Parisian cafe up against the building where people are walking in the street. So I want to be clear, we're not removing cars from Ballard Avenue, we're not removing parking, the operations will be similar to how they are today. The reason that we need to make this a sidewalk street is because if there is a curb, you can't have the pergola up against the building. If you do, people... You'll then have to have a curb cut at every single entrance to a building, and that just doesn't operate well. So the proposal here is to create a curbless street or sidewalk street to make the street work better, put pergolas against buildings, and create more space for business activity. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Strauss. Colleagues, any comments, questions? Councilmember Moore, and then Councilmember Morales.
Hi, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to be clear that I will be voting against this, and I also voted against the other two, obviously, and not because I don't support the underlying projects. I do support the underlying projects, and as Councilmember Kettle has mentioned, I will be happy to work with Councilmember Strauss on budgeting, finding another way to budget. My objection has been to the funding sources in all three of these, and clearly, my objection is to taking from sidewalks both the need for alternative sidewalks, as well as the need for sidewalk repair. The amount of money for sidewalks has continued to be whittled down, and we do have a commitment from ESTA, they are able to deliver on what we have in the Chair's package, and I am concerned about undermining their ability to complete that work. about undermining their ability to complete that work and looking at alternative sidewalks, which is a major portion of, of the intent of the, the package here. So it's not to the underlying project that is the objection, it is to, and again, we're in this position of having to pull from one bucket to another, but that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna be abstaining on this amendment, but I do want to say, I think the idea of curbless streets and this sort of pedestrianized pathway through our neighborhoods is really important. I, like Councilmember Moore, struggle with the particular funding source, but I think this is a great example of the direction we should be moving as a city to make our streets, at least, you know, in commercial areas, to make one sort of pedestrianized street available so that people can navigate through the business area in our neighborhoods safely. But I will be abstaining on this particular amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, and Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Chair, and I echo my colleague's sentiments about the, the funding source. Councilmembers Strauss, I very much appreciate you bringing these amendments forward and agreed on the underlying. Would love to see this in many of our, across the city, in many of our districts, and just across the city, but, you know, wanted to acknowledge and appreciate your efforts, and I also, it's my understanding that, you know, attachment A is not meant to be exhaustive, and I know that in the implementation process, there will be an opportunity, I believe, to address some of these particular projects as well, of the projects that were named in all your amendments. So, thank you, Councilmembers Strauss.
Yeah, thank you, and Councilmember Strauss, you know, I echo that sentiment as well. I do, I strongly support the underlying projects, probably in that exact order, how they appeared here, from an amendment perspective, and I know how critically important closing out the Berg-Gilman Trail, the, like, actually addressing finally, once and for all, the missing link in our city is to you, to District Six, to the entire city, and I'm committed to working alongside you and partnering together through the, through the budget process to, to actually properly fund this. Again, I just, my, my underlying concerns rest in the, in the funding source, not the project, and, and I do support the projects. So, in any event, colleagues, any final questions, comments? If not?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead, you get the last word.
Yeah, just saying, thank you for your thoughts. Nothing further.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Five? Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Morales?
Abstain.
Council President Nelson?
No.
Councilmember Rivera?
No.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
No.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
No.
Chair Saka?
No.
All right. Chair, that was one in favor, seven opposed, and one abstention. All right, the motion fails and Amendment Five is not adopted. Are there any comments on Amendment One, Version Two? Councilmember Morales?
No.
Is that me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, number six.
Yes, we're on number six now, aren't we?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, sorry, everyone. Okay, so, this is an amendment to, oh, Cal, were you gonna? I move, I move Amendment Six.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, it is moved and seconded to amend Amendment One, Version Two, as presented on Amendment Six from Councilmember Morales. Before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask, Cal, to provide an overview, and this, colleagues, is an opportunity for you all to ask policy-related questions.
Councilmembers, Amendment Six from Councilmember Morales adds 14 million to the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program, and it reduces 14 million from the district project fund, which would eliminate that program from the levy.
All right, Councilmember Morales, as sponsor, you are recognized in order to address it.
Thank you, Chair. I want to just reiterate what I said about this earlier in my other amendment, which is that this program is important because it starts to repair harm that started when we built our highways and freight routes through BIPOC communities and through low-income communities in many different parts of the city. The levy proposal, as transmitted by the mayor, does include this program. It equips SDOT with the resources to invest in historically under-invested communities and focuses investments in areas of high equity priority. These levy investments provide access to opportunity and benefit people across districts, and we know that transportation is essential to access key services like jobs and education and healthcare and entertainment even. Addressing transportation inequities helps to reduce disproportionate rates of illness, death, social isolation, poverty, the long-term impacts of pollution, and limited access to opportunities and wealth. Some of the key equity principles that are included in the Seattle Transportation Plan that we passed last year guide this levy proposal. Those principles include centering the voices of communities of color and underrepresented groups in planning and decision-making processes, addressing inequities in the transportation system by prioritizing investments for impacted communities, removing cost as a barrier so everyone can take the trips they need to make throughout the city, and supporting shifts towards non-punitive transportation enforcement approaches that reduce harm and enhance public safety on city streets. So this amendment incorporates guidance from the Transportation Equity Work Group and is rooted in the current levy to move Seattle's equity work plan. Programs like the People's Streets and Public Places and this Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program help ensure that the needs of communities of color and vulnerable communities are met by allowing communities to co-create projects, by focusing on relationship building, and incorporating communities into the decision-making process. And as I said before, I share the excitement about the idea of district council members having a small pot of discretionary funds to support neighborhood projects, and to meet our transportation equity goals, and given the constraints of this levy, I truly believe that we have an obligation to set aside some levy dollars specifically for prioritizing a program that is intended to address past harms and to support equitable engagement and community-driven decision-making. So colleagues, I am asking for your support for this amendment.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Morales. Are there any comments to Amendment Six? Looks like Vice Chair Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Chair, I really want to appreciate Councilmember Morales for bringing this amendment. I'm gonna be supporting it. I think far too often, we get really hyper-focused in our policy, 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 and we don't understand that there's a practice, there's an implementation, and there's also the impact. And a prime example of this, we have, and kudos to SDOT for this, I know a lot of times you all probably don't get a lot of praise, but kudos to you all. There's a church that is right across the street from the MLK Tennis Center, Reverend Hurd, and, or Pastor Hurd, excuse me, and we have put bike lanes along MLK, and so it's connecting Central District, South End, and through the work of the, the access and looking at it from an equity perspective, SDOT understood that, that church was a historically black church, a lot of its residents do not live in the Central District anymore, they have to drive in, and so they reserve parking spots along MLK, and they also do an after-school program, and so they integrated the bike lanes with some parking spots, loading zones for the kids to be able to offload from Leschi when they come down to the church. And a part of that is, you know, if you were a planner, you would say, hey, this connects A to B, but a lot of times, I think this work group intertwines and interconnects and also creates a way for people that don't have time to come down here and be able to, you know, testify or be online. They're at work most of the time, and so this group creates a voice for those people so that it feels like SDOT is really connected and embedded in the community and, and people feel heard, and I think we've only seen the beginnings of this work. This work is very new with the work group, and I think we haven't seen the long-lasting impacts of what it could, could do. So I will be supporting this, and thank you, Councilmember Morales, for bringing this forward. Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, any other final questions, comments on Amendment Number Six? Councilmember Moore?
Great, thank you. I, I do have a question, just more information about how these are neighborhood-initiated and co-created, if I could just get a little bit more information about that.
Councilmembers, this might be something for the SDOT staff to speak to.
And, and before they do, I'll just frame it up. This is essentially a rebranding, renaming of the legacy program, which is retired, retired in, in favor of this new program. The, the prior name of the program was Neighborhood Street Fund, NSF, so rebranding, renaming, functionally equivalent. I think there is a, an intended operational difference, distinction, in how it will be implemented and operationalized, which I'm not particularly clear on, so, but we have SDOT here. Go ahead.
Thank you. I've personally been very involved in the creation of this program based on a listening tour that I did late last year and early this year, and in meeting with representatives of underserved communities, I asked people, what do you need to work effectively with us in making the street changes that you see are needed? And over and over again, I was told that we need multi-year funding, and we need a dedicated point of contact who gets to know us and gets to know our neighborhood and doesn't move on when there's a new project. So I don't actually feel that this is a rebranding of an existing program respectfully. I feel this is a revision in how we interact with historically underserved communities to build deep and lasting relationships and be able to iterate with them over multiple years in waves of small improvements, and it's a way to lift up voices of people who didn't know that there was opportunities like this. Previous programs were application-based, and an application-based competitive program advantages people with more social capital. And our idea here is really to bring the table to people who didn't know there was a table and invite collaboration among folks who have limited resources to engage with city government within the traditional means.
How is this different than Neighborhood Street Fund?
Well, Neighborhood Street Fund was an application-based process where communities put together a detailed application and compete for funding, and usually, you end up with applications from communities that have lawyers and urban planners and other knowledge workers in them who are able to put forth a really competitive application. And the idea here is to bring opportunities to make change to communities whose first language is in English, to communities who haven't previously had deep relationships in City Hall or any relationships with City Hall. So there is an idea of really trying to uplift voices and create opportunities for people who otherwise wouldn't be engaged with us.
So who decides under Neighborhood Initiated Street Fund?
Ultimately, it would be the, the department's decisions, they would ultimately roll up to me, but the idea is really to do deep outreach and build long-term relationships with specific communities that we help uncover through our Transportation Equity Work Group, a group of volunteers who are helping us understand who and how to make these relationships that previously may not have existed in the fullest form that they could.
In the absence of this slush fund, does SDOT not undertake any of that work now, currently?
I, I, I'm sorry, but I don't see it as a slush fund whatsoever. I'm not comfortable with that.
Does SDOT engage, so characterize it however you want, does SDOT not engage in this underlying work that you're, you're talking about now?
This program is proposed by the executive to supplement previous waves of investment and make investment in a new way to bring people into the circle of power who previously have not felt included.
So SDOT does or does not currently under, or engage in similar efforts in the absence of this program?
This program is a response to what I heard in meeting with underserved communities about how we could improve empowering them and working with them more effectively.
Councilmember Rivera?
Sorry, Chair, I had a couple more questions, if I may.
Okay, yeah, yeah, go ahead, finish out your line of questions, go ahead.
Thank you. So I noticed that the, actually, Chair had put in here across all districts, so I'm just, you know, District Five has a lot of underserved communities, and I think we're just sort of becoming aware of the fact that there is so much underserved, there are so many underserved communities in District Five, quite a diversity of socioeconomic status as well as ethnicity and race, religious orientation. So I just, I'm just curious about, you talked about these communities being identified through the SDOT Equity Development Committee. How are you making sure that you're actually accessing communities in other districts that haven't traditionally necessarily been accessed?
Well, the Lake City Collective is one of the folks who inspired this investment proposal, and we've worked with them, we've also funded them at times, they've taken me on several walks, and, and one of the leaders of the Lake City Collective was at the press conference when the mayor put out his revised proposal, so, you know, that's exactly the type of community we're talking about.
Okay, thank you, and that there are also additional communities, but they're a great gateway, I guess, to those communities. And my last question, Chair, thank you. So this would be pulling from the district project fund. In my thinking about the district project fund, it'd basically been a fund that could do everything that's already enumerated in these other buckets, but my question is, how are we, if we take the money and we, we put an end to the district project fund, how do we address the emergent safety concerns and requests that we will get from constituents as things arise that we can't anticipate, like changing the streets in response to gun violence that has suddenly escalated, or, you know, drainage issues, I mean, things that do come up that are district-specific?
Well, I think the, the department would have to rely on the other funded programs. You would look at the Vision Zero program as another programmatic source of funding for these types of improvements. It would put more, could put more demand on services through those other programs. But I think in, in large part, we are getting into some implementation issues where we don't actually have the details of how these programs would be administered, so there is a little bit of a, a little bit of work that will need to be decided during future budgets if this program goes through to identify exactly how that will be done, that, that council still has to approve funding even with, if voters allow this, to allow us to use these funds, the council will still be involved in actually doing appropriations for the program and identifying how those things would work. I think the, the program that I would most directly look at, if the district program is, there is this Vision Zero program, potentially safer routes to schools, could also do some, and then there is the $7 million that Chair Saka has put into this neighborhood-scale traffic safety program that could be used for these kinds of projects as well.
And, and the district can come directly to, like, we can take a district-focused approach in addressing issues rather than it's a citywide issue in those funds.
That would be a future decision for council, but this would ask the voters to give permission for 7 million, for instance, for this neighborhood-scale project, and the decision of how that would be spent would be a future council decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
All right, Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Moore, for those questions, I had equal questions. I also want to thank Councilmember Morales for bringing this important issue as, as part of this. I guess... I guess one thing I want to underscore is it shouldn't be just one bucket that we identify to make sure that we are addressing the needs across underserved and communities of color across the city. It is really something that should be department-wide. I understand you're working with communities as part of this particular program, but I often get concerned when a particular program is highlighted for something that we should be doing every day as part of our everyday work across all departments in the city, including SDOT. So looking forward to hearing how you all plan to make sure you're incorporating community voice and the voices of BIPOC community and all the work that you do. I just felt it was important to talk about that, too. And then in particular to this fund, you know, we also have, in the D4 at Magnussen Park, a community both at Mercy House and Solid Ground that I hope will be part of this conversation because they're having speeding issues, as you know, at Sandpoint, what maybe I would have called back in the day as drag racing. And so those are issues that need to be addressed, and hopefully that will be part of this conversation for the families there. And then, you know, as part of the chair's, excuse me, the chair's package, I know there is funding for this and the district-specific, and I also know that the district-specific, the old version of the neighborhood matching, or just what it was called, I'm sorry, I can't remember now, fund had...
Free fund.
Yes. I know, I was not aware that you needed to have legal assistance or anything of that nature. I have heard folks from the district talk about identifying a street circle and being able to, yes, they had to apply, but I'm pretty sure not everyone had had a lawyer involved. So is that part of the requirements or the criteria? Or are you just saying that folks just on their own accord do it? I just want to clarify. And anyway, and then I'll just finish out and let you clarify, just there is a need in my mind for district-specific work as well because we all know we have constituents that are identifying certain things that need to be of the smaller scale, which I think was the point of this, identified in the district. And so, you know, support both. I know they're both in the chair's package.
Thank you. Councilmember...
Oh, sorry, Chair, can we let Director Spotts address that question?
Thanks for the opportunity to clarify. I wasn't meaning to say you needed legal or urban planning competency to make an application, but we have learned in our industry that application, competitive application-based processes tend to bias towards communities with more social capital, more knowledge workers, more skill at putting together an application. And, you know, communities whose first language is in English, for example, typically aren't, don't have the capabilities to put together a competitive application, and that's why we're looking at different ways of engaging deeply with those communities and empowering them.
I appreciate you answering that. And again, I hope, not just with this, all applications that residents across the city put in, I hope that you will offer assistance, and you can look at the application and know whether someone needs assistance. My thoughts are when someone's putting in an application, they're identifying a need for a project at a particular location, and I would think that you all, as the experts, would help community figure out how to address that need versus having an application that is written out by a professional, but that you would be the ones helping, once they identify what the need is, you can serve to help the constituents with that as part of this or any other application that is coming through SDOT.
Thank you. Councilmember Kettle.
Thank you, Chair Saka. Also, thank you, Councilmember Morales, for highlighting this program, this concept in a lot of ways. And thank you, Director Spotts, for your answers to it. And I will say, I used to be one of those people that were, you know, coming together as a group to advocate for our neighborhood on different, you know, wherever, you know, the Street Fund, the Small Sparks Fund, there's a whole, there was more than that, and a lot of those predate the development of the district system, too. And so I recognize the point, and I do think it's important to have a Neighborhood Initiated Safety Program with that concept and that kind of underlying position. I would say, you know, in terms of the district fund, I've already said, you know, the focus is going to be on traffic pedestrian safety from my perspective. And, you know, in terms of being district representatives, I do know my district very well, and, you know, so does the south, the east slope, the Lower East Slope of Magnolia get the attention? A lot of times it doesn't, so it helps to have a district representative to highlight because I know that area very well. And there's other parts of Magnolia that's, you know, it's, the stereotype is one on the top, but there's to the north and on the Lower East Slope, particularly by the tracks, is a, you know, difficult area that has needs from a traffic and pedestrian safety perspective. And that's something that, you know, I could, you know, work through in terms, from a district perspective, particularly because I charge my District Seven Neighborhood Council with these kinds of things as well. And as you know from our spreadsheet that we gave you, we are definitely working this piece. So thank you for your answers. Thank you for Councilmember Morales, and I'll just pledge again to basically have the District Seven, my office, myself, my office, and the District Seven Neighborhood Council really operate in partnership with the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Chair. I guess I would ask, Chair, I'm looking at the neighborhood-scale traffic safety programs, and there's $7 million in there, and I'm just wondering, how does that, perhaps that program differ from the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program? And I'm wondering whether an amendment might be in order to put that $7 million, to transfer that $7 million into the Neighborhood Initiated Safety Partnership Program?
Yeah, so, thank you, Councilmember Moore. So what you're proposing gets to the heart of the challenge here, and that is, you know, and this is the number-one rub in terms of consolidating all and harmonizing as best as possible everyone's feedback. This is the number-one area of, you know, we had the most variance, I suppose, with respect to where the specific money, you know, is intended to be funded or be allocated and which specific program and pot. And so how it's currently planned and proposed, this generic, small, whatever it's called in that attachment, you know, that, it could be for, the idea is that it could be for Neighborhood Initiated Safety. It could be for District Project Fund. Some of you colleagues, like, moved a lot of that, or all of it, to District Project Fund. Some of you really love District Project Fund. And, or it could be for any number of investments within that category, but high-level, we align and agree on the need for smaller-scale safety-type improvements. And so that is the compromise position that we took in this proposed chair's package is that there are such strong feelings. And a couple other comments from my perspective as well. First, I note that the executive's own proposal reduced the Neighborhood Initiated Street Fund from the April draft amount, what was it, $46 million, $47, I don't know, to the final proposed amount in May of $41 million. Executive's own proposal did that. And so what we're doing is reallocating that to some other areas that reflect this council's priorities. And all that remains to be seen. We're going to vote on it in a moment. And then, but I do think, because it is a brand-new program, as Director Spotts aptly noted, it's a brand-new program, I think there are questions about how it's going to be administered exactly. I get the concept and the idea, but there are valid questions about how it remains to be implemented. And that's why the guidance and direction that we're providing in the companion resolution, like, specifically requests an executive proposal on how this will be implemented, amongst other things. Same thing for District Project Fund, which itself is a net new thing. So to preserve, in order to preserve the District Project Fund and the Neighborhood Initiative Safety, this is the compromise position that we took. And again, this $7 million, again, we all agree, you can call it whatever you want, categorize it in whatever bucket or subcategory you so choose, but broadly what it is, it's all the same thing. It's smaller-scale safety improvements in neighborhoods and communities. And, again, I get the need for equity and making sure communities have, who have historically been marginalized and disenfranchised and ignored from these safety projects and road construction projects, et cetera, have their voices centered for once. I also think that, again, there's a lot of this implementation remains to be seen, and we also, we can't just slap the term equity or community on something and expect it's going to yield immediately equitable or community-driven results. So that's why I want to see a proposal. So in any event, long would it wait me saying, this is the compromise approach that recognizes the competing kind of visions of where these smaller-scale safety improvements should be.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Morales, as amendment sponsor, you are welcome to have the last word if you so choose.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate the discussion here. Thank you, Director Spotts, as well. I appreciate the discussion. I think, I do want to be clear that the intent for this program is not just for District Two. We have low-income communities throughout the city. We have communities of color throughout the city. And so this Transportation Equity Work Group is working or attempting to work with all of them so that those communities can get access to their government and to decision-making. And so I will just say that I think this work is important. We have race and social justice ordinance in this city. We have racial equity principles and goals that we are trying to reach in the city. And this particular work falls under that bucket. So I do think it's important that we support the people doing this work and support them being out in community to try to make sure that our constituents get access to their local government. So, yeah, I will leave it at that, and I think, ask for your support.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. All right. Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Six?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Abstain.
Councilmember Rivera?
Abstain.
Councilmember Strauss?
No.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
No.
Okay, one second. Okay, Chair, that is four in favor, three opposed, and two abstentions.
All right. The motion carries, and Amendment Six is adopted. Are there any comments on, or, excuse me, we're going to take up Amendment Number Seven, and Amendments Number Seven and Eight in just a moment. There's a lot of parts, people, and, you know, so we're going to take, we're going to pause for 10 minutes. We're going to take a recess if, let's see here, so if there are no objections, we will be in recess until 1:08 PM. Hearing no objections, we are in recess until 1:08 PM. Hearing no objections, we are in recess until 1:08 PM.[250.79]
From their report, which says that since most new housing and offices are currently being developed in dense neighborhoods, which have access to mass transit sidewalks and bike lanes, it may be advisable to consider impact fees based on the number of car parking spots in a new development. This would not only bring in revenue for transportation projects, but help the city meet climate-related goals. Transportation impact fees should be designed with a careful equity lens, and extremely importantly, and include exemptions for affordable housing. So that's definitely the analysis that I would like to see. The other thing that I would note is that a recent survey has found that there's 75% support for impact fees, which is certainly a level of support that I think we'd love to see on the levy itself. And I would note the overwhelming majority of other cities have impact fees, including Shoreline, Kenmore, Burie, and Tuckwillis, Sea Tech, Bellevue, who's not necessarily known as being anti-developer, Kirkland, and Bothell. So, again, the purpose of this is simply to begin the process of the city looking at alternative funding sources that are not going to continue to have a disproportionate impact on property taxes, on property owners, and individuals who are in possession of property and as landlords and then having to pass it on to renters. And I think it's important that we at least engage in that conversation, that we have a full, have the issue fully vetted, so we can look at the pros and the cons, and then at that stage, make the decision that we need to make. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Colleagues, are there any comments or questions on Amendment 7?
Was, are we?
I've...
What's that?
Oh, usually our central staff analyst speaks to them. Are you going?
I'd speak at the top of the hour.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no other. Go ahead. If you have, do you have a question? Comment?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, transportation impact fees are driven by land use changes, be that zoning changes or changes to incentive zoning regulations. And as authorized by the Growth Management Act, they require a two-step legislative process. First, the comp plan must be amended to establish a list of eligible projects. And then, second, implementing legislation must be developed to impose a fee on new development. And different councils over time have made, have put forward multiple statements, I think since as far back as 2015, in recitals and budget documents stating the council's intent to consider impact fees. And last fall, council considered but did not pass Council Bill 120635. And that was last November or December. That legislation would have amended the comprehensive plan to establish a list of impact fee eligible projects, and one reason it failed was because that list and rate structure were out of date. And so, I'm not entering into a discussion of the pros and cons of impact fees, but I believe that the discussion over how we're going to pay for our transportation changes, if driven, given that transportation fees, I see them as a land use function, and we're going to be entering into a big, long discussion and in legislation on the comp plan update this coming year. I think that that's a more appropriate place for this discussion. We've already, you know, it's not a question, we've had developers, yes, weigh in on this, but we've also had affordable housing providers weigh in in opposition to transportation impact fees. And so, it's clearly a discussion that merits a lot of sort of complex thinking, and so I will be voting against this because I think that we'll have a great opportunity to think about how we're going to pay for transportation in the transportation element of the comp plan update coming forward. And we already also do have within this package before us a process, sort of the framework of a process to put forward additional funding for durable infrastructure and sidewalks. So that is why I will be voting against this.
Thank you. Any final questions, comments? If not, I'll yield the floor to Councilmember Moore for the last word, if he so chooses.
Okay. Yeah, thank you very much, Council President. I appreciate that perspective. I guess what I would point out is because this is limited to sidewalks, I don't think it necessarily is in the best place to be in the comp plan regarding. I think the discussion about how we should be funding sidewalks is one that is appropriately within the transit arena. And it's also something that we need to be having a discussion about relatively soon. And we're sort of behind the ball on the comp plan at this point. But anyway, I would, my main point being that this is related to sidewalks, which is a critical piece of our transit infrastructure, and so I do think it is an appropriate place. And also, I think it's appropriate to be having SDOT and other people who are going to be on that task force, which includes business labor, subject matter experts, who have all dealt with this issue in other jurisdictions and other contexts, to be engaged in that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President, is that a stale hand that you have there, Ryan?
I put it up to say what I just did.
Okay.
So I will take it down.
Perfect. All right. Well, colleagues, if there are no final comments, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment 7?
Councilmember Kettle?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Morales? Council President Nelson? Councilmember Rivera? Councilmember Strauss? Councilmember Wu? Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
No.
And Chair Saka?
No.
Okay, Chair, that is one vote in favor and seven opposed.
All right. The motion fails, and Amendment 7 is not adopted. At this point, we're close, colleagues, we're close. Are there any, on this at least, are there any comments on Amendment 1, version 2, as amended?
Thank you very much. I move the walk-on Amendment 8 that was distributed earlier this morning, and councilmembers have a hard copy next to them.
Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend Amendment 1, version 2, as presented via Council President's Amendment 8 walk-on amendment. Before the sponsor addresses it, I will ask central staff to provide an overview of this, and this is an opportunity for members to ask policy-related questions.
Councilmember's Amendment 8, offered by Council President Nelson, adds clarifying language to the description of the Office of the Waterfront Project, the Central Waterfront Project, to include Pioneer Square connections.
All right. Council President Nelson, as the sponsor, you are recognized in order to address it.
Thank you very much. My original amendment, which I think the Chair for, including in the package, would make sure that a portion of the urban forestry funding under the Climate and Resiliency Bucket is used to support improvements in the, that were, that were contractually obligated to provide as part of the waterfront project. And this makes explicit that those improvements also include improvements along Pioneer Square connections to the waterfront project, as requested by the folks that requested the original amendment, which was the Central Waterfront Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, are there any other questions or comments on Amendment 8? Councilmember Kettle?
Thank you, Chair Saka. Thank you, Council President, for the amendment. I have been many times to the waterfront with this fantastic project that is nearing completion. It is a marvel. And some of those visits that I've had with the Office of the Waterfront, and then also with the Friends of the Waterfront, they noted, and I believe with SDOT too, you know, their depictions of the project, it's not just the waterfront. You know, we have the Elliott Bay Connections piece, which is going to go further north, but we also have, and that's a separate project, I should note, but we also have connections into the neighboring communities to include Pioneer Square. And these are really important to ensure that they're set and to make clear that these are part of the waterfront project and to really create a world-class connection. This connects to the Soto, the stadiums as well, and this will really set the, you know, for moving forward to ensure that we have a, you know, that beautiful waterfront project, which is going to be key for residents and visitors alike moving forward. So I support the amendment. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows what we're talking about here, the original amendment said, "Support, maintenance, and plant establishment for landscape elements of the Central Waterfront Project and Pike Pine Corridor in coordination with Seattle Center." And this would add the words, "including Pioneer Square connections," after Central Waterfront Project. Thanks.
All right. So, colleagues, if there are no final questions, comments, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Number 8?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
And Chair Saka?
Aye.
Okay, Chair, that is nine votes in favor.
All right. The motion carries, and Amendment 8 is adopted. Let's see, are there any final comments on Amendment 1, version 2, as specifically amended just now? That was, and I also note that that was the last amendment before taking a final vote on Amendment 1, version 2, as amended here today. So, are there any further comments on Amendment 1, version 2, as amended? My two amendments. Go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Sorry, I just had a question. Does this include attachment 2 to Amendment 1 that we're voting on?
Attachment 2?
Yes, attachment 2 is the recitals, and that would be part of this action.
So it's all part of what? Okay, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Morales?
Well, I thought Councilmember Saka had, or Kettle had his hand up first.
Didn't you have your hand up? Oh, no? Okay.
Might have been a stale hand, yeah.
Are we, is this our final comment? Are we voting now?
Yeah, final comments, and then we're going to vote on the revised Chair's package, Amendment 1, version 2, as amended by versions Amendment 6 and 8.
Okay, very well. Well, I do want to start by thanking you, Chair, again, and your team. I also do want to thank the SDOT staff, who have been briefing all of us separately. Central staff has been briefing all of us, and really appreciate the work that you have been doing. I will say, one of the examples, I know the amendment didn't pass, but I think it's important to just explain for the purpose of everyone, as an example, we have a project in my district, Rose Street, where several years ago, there were lots of different pieces of SDOT working at that. There was sidewalk improvements, there were tree planting, there was signal timing, and different people from SDOT's different departments were there, but they weren't talking to one another. And it was leaving community in this weird place of having to figure out who the right person is and how to get this project, all these different projects done. And so I do think it's important that the department is moving toward, you know, getting out of those silos, really focusing and centering communities so that we can deliver projects more equitably and faster. So I just want to thank the department for that. So, I do want to highlight some of the priorities that are in the Chair's package that are included for District 2. We have a little over $8 million in new sidewalks, thanks to the 17% allocation in the pedestrian safety category. Bike projects at just over $67 million. Not all of the projects that are listed there are District 2, but many of the priorities that are in that category are for connecting fragments of the bike network in the South End. We have $6 million for transit passenger safety. We have included in the list of projects, the station area planning for Graham Street and for the CID. It does not include any specific funding, which I will admit is a disappointment. We started with a $15 million request, and in my package would have had $5 million. So I still think that that is important work, and I hope that the department will find the funding to make sure that the community gets access to the support that they need for that process. And then we added Rainier Avenue to the Vision Zero estimated investments, so that we can make sure that we are addressing one of the most dangerous streets in the city and ensuring that neighbors, whether they're crossing the street to get to school, or going to the lighthouse for the blind, or trying to navigate our bus system along Rainier, that they can do so safely. So I want to, just wanted a chance to highlight some of those things for folks in the South End, and to thank everybody in the department and on the central staff and Councilmember Saka's team for the work that you've done. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morales. Can I just say, I really do appreciate you and your comments just now. You put together a lot of thoughtful amendments throughout this process, and, you know, you've, you and I have had really productive, direct, one-on-one conversations, you know, for months on the levy. And it takes, it takes a leader to be willing to stand up and put yourself out there, and then humble yourself if your stuff doesn't get passed and moved and supported, myself included, by the way. I put together, right before us, I just put together a, what I thought had consensus, and turns out I was wrong. And, you know, that's okay. But I am happy with the final package. I'm delighted with the final package, because it reflects a citywide view, and all of us can claim credit, and it does center safety investments for the whole city. And this is something to be excited of, or to be excited about, and rally around, and unite, because, you know, 30% of SDOT's budget is this, is the levy. And if it doesn't pass, well, I, like, let's just say it'd be catastrophic. Jobs are on the line, the city's ability to conduct basic, perform essential services on the line, I don't want to talk about that, because I think where we're landing directionally is putting together a package that we can all be excited about, we can all rally around, and that, that we, that, but ultimately voters are going to decide on, right? And so anyways, very thoughtful remarks. Thank you for those. And, all right, cool. And any final questions, comments? Okay? Will the clerk call the roll on the adoption of Amendment 1, version 2, as amended?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Council, sorry, I went out of order. Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss? Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
Emphatic yes.
Okay, Chair, that is eight votes in favor and one abstention.
All right. The motion carries, and Amendment 1, version 2, as amended, is adopted. Council colleagues, recall, we, there's a pending motion before us, and that is the very first thing that we moved, and that is the originally transmitted levy legislation. So that is the bill, as amended just now, that is before us. We will need to vote to officially tie a bow on everything. Are there any final comments on the bill as specifically amended just now? All right. Hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the recommendation that the bill pass as amended?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Epstein.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
Yes.
Okay, Chair, that is eight votes in favor and one abstention.
All right. The motion carries, and the committee's recommendation that the bill pass as amended will be sent to the July 9 City Council meeting for final consideration. Moving on, we will now move on to our second item of business. Will the clerk please read the title of Item 2 into the record?
Agenda Item 2, Resolution 32137, relating to Transportation and Company Ordinance, requesting the 2024 Transportation Levy for Citywide Transportation Maintenance and Improvements and Providing Further Direction Regarding Reporting and Implementation of the Programs to be Funded by the Levy for Briefing Discussion and Possible Vote.
Thank you. And it looks like Yolanda Ho of Council Central Staff has joined us. Welcome. So thank you for joining us at the table. Yolanda will provide us with a high-level overview of Amendments 1 and 2. After her presentation, I will move the resolution, and then, excuse me, amendment sponsors will move their respective amendments. And after receiving a second, Yolanda will provide a more detailed overview of the amendment before voting on each amendment.
All right. Yolanda Ho, Council Central Staff. So previously, we discussed a pre-introduction draft, so I just wanted to highlight a couple of changes in the version that is before you. It is largely the same as what we discussed a couple weeks ago, but we did revise Councilmember Hollingsworth's item in Section 3, Subsection E, related to a post-project delivery design and impact evaluation. We revised Councilmember Morales's item in Section 4, Subsection D, related to Litting I-5, to include a reference to the specific work items described in Resolution 32100 that has been, had been adopted by the council last year with the mayor's concurrence. And we added a new Subsection E to Section 4 at Councilmember Kettle's request, related to supporting the ongoing collaboration between SDOT, the Seattle Fire Department, and other emergency responders to ensure access for emergency vehicles when implementing right-of-way improvements intended to increase safety for the traveling public. And with that, we can discuss amendments.
Yeah, first off, I guess, so thank you, Yolanda. I, first and foremost, move that the committee recommends adoption of Resolution 32137. Is there a second?
Second.
It is moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. And so, as sponsor, I will, I will, I guess, address this item pretty, to supplement the great comments on kind of factually what this does and accomplishments, or accomplishes that Yolanda just mentioned. You know, this is the result, colleagues, of a lot of hard work from you all and a lot of collaboration here at the dais and kind of in behind the scenes as well. So thank you for the partnership and the collaboration. I mean, it's a pretty self-explanatory resolution. And in any event, but are there any other questions or comments on the resolution? Who's the first?
Is it Kettle?
It's you. Moore.
Okay, so, okay, I move to amend Amendment 1, version 2, to Resolution 32137.
Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend Resolution 32137 as presented on Amendment 1, version 2. Before the sponsor addresses it, well, we, well, actually, no, we didn't quite get to the amendment portion where you commented on it. So I will ask Yolanda to provide an overview. And reminder, colleagues, this is an opportunity for you all to ask policy-related questions.
All right. So Amendment 1, version 2, sponsored by Councilmember Moore, would revise the list of sidewalk locations listed under Section 2, Subsection E, to remove several locations and just make some minor clarifications.
All right. And Councilmember Moore, as sponsor of this amendment, you are recognized in order to address it.
All right, thank you very much, Chair. This is really just a technical amendment. The first two were included in the Chair's package, so I'm taking that out of the resolution, clarifying that the part that's in the Chair's package is to complete a section of sidewalk. And then I actually removed two additional projects to narrow the number of projects that I would be asking SDOT to take into consideration.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Colleagues, any other comments, questions on this amendment? All right. Well, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of Amendment 1, version 2?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Morales?
Epstein.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss? Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
Yes.
All right, Chair, that is eight in favor and one abstention.
All right. The motion carries, and Amendment 1, version 2, is adopted. So are there any further comments on the resolution as amended a moment ago? Looking at you, I'm looking in your direction, Councilmember Kettle?
Yes. I'd like to move Amendment 2, version 1, to Resolution 32137, Ledged 2024 Transportation Levy Resolution, new emergency response recital.
Second.
Second.
All right. It is moved and seconded to amend Resolution 32137 as presented on Amendment 2. Councilmember Kettle, as sponsor of the amendment, you are recognized in order to address it.
Thank you very much, Chair Saka. I just wanted to highlight, you know, in my conference, as Chair of the Public Safety Committee, I am meeting with first responders on a regular basis across all areas with police and fire and others. And it's come clear to me that we need to ensure that those considerations are taken into account. And this is not just for transportation, this is also for the comprehensive plan, too. We need to ensure that our first responders can respond, because if they don't, then, you know, all the improvements that we're doing on so many fronts is going to be lost because we can't get to them, or we can't get them to Harborview or to the next station, you know, they need to be taken. And these are the things that we need to ensure that are part of the planning process. And again, not just for transportation, this goes to the comments regarding having a public safety element within the comprehensive plan. And I think it's straightforward, and I think all of us have been to fire stations, we've been to precinct, and we've seen this firsthand in our conversations with first responders. So I would ask for everyone to support this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Kettle. As always, appreciate your leadership on these important and helping us better discern the nexus between public safety and transportation, policy planning. And so, in any event, colleagues, are there any other comments, questions on this proposed amendment number 2? Okay, hearing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of Amendment Number 2?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales? Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth? Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
Aye.
Chair, that is eight votes in favor.
All right. The motion carries and Amendment 2 is adopted. Are there any further comments on the resolution as specifically amended by Amendments 1 and 2?
Correction, that was nine votes in favor, sorry.
Hearing no additional comments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the recommendation that the resolution be adopted as amended?
Councilmember Kettle?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Morales?
Yes.
Council President Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera?
Aye.
Councilmember Strauss?
Yes.
Councilmember Wu?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hollingsworth?
Yes.
Chair Saka?
Aye.
Okay, Chair, that is nine in favor.
Great. The motion carries and the recommendation that the resolution be adopted as amended will be sent to the July 9 City Council meeting for final consideration. Woo, all right. Great job, colleagues. Thank you, members of the public, for bearing with us. Thank you, central staff, my own staff. Thank you, SDOT, for hanging, hanging tough with us through this marathon. More work ahead, one final procedural vote and hurdle. But I feel, feel great about where we landed today. So, we have reached the end of today's meeting agenda. Is there any further business to come before the committee before we adjourn? Hearing no further business to come before the committee? We are adjourned. It is 1:46 PM.